Okay, that's 5:30. Welcome, everybody. It's 5:30 PM on June 9, 2025. We're all gathered here at 10 West State Street, which is our city council chambers for a regularly scheduled Monday meeting of the Marshalltown City Council Agenda. We are called to order with those available. Join us on the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Fonseca, here. Kel?
Here.
Lottie Hoff?
Here.
Mitchell?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Full house? That's good. I parked in the 90-minute zone out here just to, you know, tell you we're gonna try to keep this. But I know somebody.
With the police chief here, well, now the clock has now started.
Exactly. All right, we're down to a public comment. Item D, members of the public may make comments on any item that was not on the agenda during this time. The speakers to approach the mics, state your name and address, and limit your comments three minutes or less unless I authorize more. And address your comments to the mayor and council as a whole, and the mayor and council may not, they may provide, we may provide a response to public comment, but shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public. No action may be taken on those items because we might fall afoul of the open meetings laws. With that said, it's time for council administrator and mayor comments, and to be honest, the council like to start. Oh, oh, yeah. Oh, duh. I did it again. You know, the last two meetings, I remembered to do it. The microphone is open, so after that long caveat, we don't jump right onto comments up here. Anybody like to speak? You can just kick me.
Good evening. Lee Botter, 13 East Southridge Road, down on the south side. First of all, contrary to what another business owner incorrectly stated about me following the council presentation in May on the mall, I want to clarify some issues. I've been in the insurance business since 1983, and after leaving my corporate position, I started my small business in 2010 when I identified the needs within my industry. My daily activities include deep analysis of situations, problem solving, and implementation of creative solutions. Budgeting and time management are always part of my and other successful businesses. My office overlooks the mall area, and I am looking forward to it being cleaned up. I would never stay at a position on a given topic for another business that I do not own. However, my business is interwoven with the success or failure of other businesses in not only Marshalltown, but in central Iowa. So naturally, I'm concerned about the overall impacts, especially with our iconic and unique businesses that say Marshalltown. Businesses that I am very proud that our community supports and we also support. We teach our children to question and seek answers, and in my opinion, asking questions is not only a right that we have, but it's a moral obligation that we must pursue. Because of my analytical nature, I tend to drive my family crazy because I run through risk analysis all the time. I do cost-benefit analysis, and I have lots of questions. But I'm gonna limit today's comments in respect to the one impact question that I asked before, what stores are coming? The rationale behind that question is if the stores are duplication of what we already have, does it serve the goal and purpose of getting our residents to shop local? I understand that John Hall and the team, they don't want to tell us what stores are coming, but through informal conversations I've had with community members, many think of this as an indoor mall, like we had in the past. I want to say a thank you to Kix 101.1 for posing the question on their Facebook page the day after, saying, hey, what stores would you like to see go in the new shops of Marshalltown? There were 203 responses, and just to name a few of the names of the big stores were TJ Maxx, Hallmark, Target, Kohl's, Old Navy, Bath &amp; Body, Ulta, Five Below, Lids, Nike, American Eagle, Carter's, Harbor Freight, Dick's Sporting Goods, and it goes on and on. Can you guys at least let us know what kind of stores are coming? Do they include women and men's kids' clothing, sporting goods? I actually know a friend of ours wanted to come to the meeting today, but they are en route to Des Moines right now to pick up sporting gear for their children because Walmart doesn't have it. Office supplies. We were named yesterday picking up office supplies because Walmart doesn't have it. Makeup, jewelry, gifts for weddings, household items, pets, bookstores, music stores, food option. And it does look like on your concept drawing that there's gonna be a place for kids to play.
I hate to cut you off, but you did hit the time limit. This is the first time I've seen people have to get out extra chairs, so.
That's, that's okay. Just thank you for your time.
Mic is open for more comment. And if nobody else wants to come, I'd, okay, come on up.
Erin Carpenter, 802 North Fourth Street. I serve as a volunteer on a few different city committees, the Stormwater Advisory Committee, Trees Forever, and the Nuisance Enforcement Advisory Task Force. I want to speak briefly about something that kind of cuts across many of tonight's decisions and others that you'll make throughout the year, how we build long-term resilience into Marshalltown's future environmentally, socially, financially. I recognize that this is a tough budget year. Leaner operations and trade-offs are necessary, but I urge us not to lose sight of the bigger picture. Stormwater systems protect homes, parks, roads, and public health. Our urban tree canopy reduces runoff, cools neighborhoods, and calms traffic. Zoning and redevelopment decisions shape our vulnerabilities and our opportunities for decades. Marshalltown has a chance to lead here, not by doing everything at once, but by thinking systemically. We can align funding and infrastructure across departments, public works, parks, planning, to better serve residents now and build a more resilient future. That includes smart investments in canopy, green infrastructure, and sustainable development. As someone who's worked professionally in grant coordination and sustainability, and as someone who cares deeply about this community, I appreciate the work that you're doing, and I look forward to continuing to serve as a volunteer. Thank you.
Thanks for serving on those committees with us, too.
Okay, yeah, so today I just wanted to use my public comments. So I saw.
We recognize Marco, but others may not.
Okay, yeah, Marco Yeps Gomez, 11 North Sixth Street, Marshalltown. Yeah, so I saw impact on the agenda, and I've been meaning to kind of, you know, give them my flowers. So really, my comment is really to speak about my gratitude and support for the impact program. I remember first hearing about the program two years ago, and I couldn't believe the strong stride Marshalltown made by enacting the program. Because of public comment rules, I won't name specific people, but I hope activists and the leader of our, and the leaders in our community that were involved in making the program can feel my gratitude. I remember learning about this awesome idea and sharing crisis duties between non-criminal crisis experts and the police in the summer of 2020. I'm happy for those activists at that time in the nationwide effort to bring those, these initiatives up. I'm happy for the leaders, not only in this city, but throughout the nation, who helped legitimize these initiatives, too. There is no doubt this should be the standard in every city, and I'm happy my town has been a core leader in it. Again, thank you to the activists and leaders for making this into a reality in Marshalltown. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Marco. Anyone else? Okay, very good. Now time for the comments by anybody up here.
Your honor, I'd make one. I know Counselor Lottie Hoff was down at Riverview Park all weekend, but I did hear from a number of people how much their children and themselves are enjoying the park and using the trails to get there and the trails behind, you know, the Lynn Creek District up to the Legion. So a lot of good public infrastructure improvements here in Marshalltown, and we're getting compliments.
Anyone else? Carol? Okay, Jeff and I were at the radio station this morning. We talked about that a little bit. Also out there, you can see the pickleball courts going up. There's a beautiful basketball court. They're gonna have a sand volleyball court. People have been fishing. We need to figure out if we've stocked that pond, and if not, I have an expert witness in the case that can do that very cheaply, 500 bucks an acre to stock it. And then if you drive by the Water Plaza area, there's a lot of dirt being moved there, too. So it's kind of an exciting town to drive around on a weekend and see what's going on around here. So that's all I wanted to add, too. Very good. Let's go on to the consent agenda. As I understand it, before noon today, we had items six and eight polled. So with those two excised from here, would anybody like to move that we approve the consent agenda of the remaining 10 items?
Move to approve, your honor.
I'll second that, your honor.
Roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Very good. That carried on to item six. Is there a motion to approve item six?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Your honor, thank you. Couple of things I just want to clarify. Not a big deal. I'm just thinking down the road, depending on how people interpret the verbiage in this HR policy. And under the bereavement leave for full-time regular employees, it makes the point that to qualify for the bereavement leave says they must attend the funeral. So I guess I'd like those words stricken because I don't know how we're gonna, you know, even be, or, yeah, enforce that, even know. And then with the changes that have been happening over the years, I know there's been fewer, you know, I'm hanging my hat on the word funeral. I think there's been fewer funerals, you know, versus other types of services. So I guess I'd like to see that stricken, because I just don't, I see an enforcement issue there. And then where was the other one? Alicia, help me.
Um, yeah, there was a piece about the different pay differential for bilingual staff members you had raised.
And that was explained to me, so I'm okay with that, that just as needed in, in just the first language. God, my mind's going blank now with that.
It was the evaluation one that you were talking about, removing.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. The other one that concerned me was if someone has their review and they meet or exceed the expectations, the word again, I'm hanging my head on one word. It says they may get the raise to the next step. And I think if they meet or exceed, and I think most people will agree, if you meet or exceed the expectations, the raise should be, you know, it's, it's a given. So I guess I would make the motion to correct those two items. The must attend the funeral and then strike the word "may" receive. And again, maybe the "may" needs a caveat, though, you know, unless the council has put a freeze on, you know, wages, something like that.
And I'll just add that staff is okay with those changes.
Then we could take your suggestion as a motion to amend.
Yes, your honor.
Is there a second to that motion to amend?
Second.
Any discussion up here or out there? Roll call.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion is amended. Do we really need to have a motion to now approve the motion? I mean, do we need to have a roll call on?
We'll make a motion to approve the amended motion.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Roll call.
I should say the motion as amended.
There you go.
Could you, I did not catch who made the motion.
Gary did.
Gary did, and who was the second? Okay, thank you. Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Good catchers.
Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. And anybody want to move for approval of number eight, the resolution?
Move to approve, your honor.
Second.
Discussion about this one.
Your honor, I asked for this to be polled. The winning bid was by $7 to an out-of-town firm. I have no problems with them, but I do think we should amend our purchasing policy to allow for situations like this. So I think maybe a 1% tolerance up to $10,000 or something like that, just to try to keep our taxpayer dollars local if we can, but still keep local firms competitive in bidding and give people outside a chance, just like we'd like Marshalltown firms to have a chance bidding outside, too. But I think when it comes down to such a small difference, I think we should award it to somebody locally. So I would make a motion for up to $10,000. If it's in a 1% threshold, give the council to choose the local vendor.
I'll second. I'll second. We'll consider that as a motion to amend as well. Okay, discussion about the amendment.
Your Honor?
Up here, yeah.
Within that, such a small margin, just the service, initial services that are under warranty would cost more than that to go down to the out-of-town firm to cover that. So this is well within a good policy for me.
I know when I first got on council, what was it, 11 years ago? We had a 5% rule. I don't remember what the specifics were, but there was a, if anybody was within, any local person was within 5% of a bid, that we would take the local bid. Is that, I remember it too, Mike? Okay. So this is a little tighter, but still with the same idea.
That one had a lower cap, though. It had like a $5,000 cap. And inflation sits five years ago, Joel's gun up a little bit, so.
Tell that to my KEO in 501K.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
So you're saying 1% to $10,000? We're not keeping the 3%?
Yeah, after some thinking, I mean, like I said, to keep everybody bidding competitively, because we want to spend our money wisely, I think 1% is a pretty good threshold.
I'm still trying to do the math in my head up to $10,000, but.
$100.
There you go. Thank you.
And actually, I'm okay with 3% up to $10,000. And I think we should favor, to a certain extent, our local people. I know I saw some stuff on Facebook where people were going off on, this stupid city, look what they're doing. Well, the staff did exactly what the staff is supposed to do. Under our policies, bring us things. That's what we expect them to do, and that's what they did. And that's why this has arisen now. I would like to see it go to the 3%, up to $10,000 myself. I think 1% is too tight for my opinion, so.
Anyone else up here?
Your Honor.
Mr. Kel, well, I didn't hear a motion to amend yet. Let's still keep it in discussion.
I'm somewhat wondering if there's a potential middle ground here. I know you're going to say, well, 2%. That's not where I'm going.
Two and a half?
Yeah. For all the reasons spoken, the local multiplier effect by choosing and doing business locally, that's well-known and will far outweigh the $100 potentially, or $99 more we'll spend. But I guess I don't know all of the number of purchases that we have, but that $10,000 seems pretty low to me for this type of purchase, for a capital purchase. I was kind of, before Counselor Lottie Hoff spoke, I was wondering if $20,000, 1%. I mean, we're talking $200, but provide us a little more leverage in the future as we're looking at capital purchases that can be done locally.
Other council comment?
Your Honor, I have a, I guess, a procedural clarification question, and I want to see this debate continue and work something out, because I truly believe in shopping local when it makes sense. But are we off track here? Is this even something we should be discussing right now? Because this isn't an issue that's even on the agenda. The issue is buying this mower and voting on that, and is, so I guess I need a-
Yeah, so what I was going to suggest is that council give us direction to amend the local preference policy portion of the purchasing policy, and we can do a little bit of research here and bring back a proposal that I think can get at what you're trying to accomplish with some potential changes.
I think it'd be helpful to know how many purchases we make in a year and that kind of thing from the staff that actually have to do it.
Yeah, we can, we can take a look at sort of, is there a sort of a breakpoint or threshold that we think would be appropriate for that threshold for local preference? And we can also do a little bit of research on what other cities in Iowa have for their local preference percentage. I think 3% is sort of a, kind of a general number that cities use, but we can verify that.
Your Honor, if I may? And I hate to muddy the water, but we probably need legal advice on whatever we're going to come up with, right?
Sure.
As I understand it, the motion isn't to affect what's happened on this one in the agenda, right?
That was a question, Your Honor. Should this be a table until we clarify our policy, or are we going to go forward with this and clarify our policy for future purchases?
Question.
Your Honor? Carol, as the parliamentarian, is it okay if I would make a motion to accept the second bid from the in-town vendor and direct staff to bring back a policy that raises the threshold from the $5,000 up?
Yes, I believe so.
So moved.
No point of order, Your Honor. We have a motion on the table. It needs to be finalized first.
We would have to vote on the first motion to amend first.
Could I amend my original motion?
You could withdraw the original.
I'll just withdraw it, then.
Okay. Is the floor still open to make a motion, then, to move forward?
Okay, Your Honor, I make a motion that we accept the second bid from the local vendor for the mower and to also have staff bring back, raising the limits on the 3% from $5,000 to $10,000.
Is there a second to that?
A second.
And I'm going to treat it as an original motion, not a motion to amend the original item number eight. Discussion, further discussion up here?
My only question would be, it sounded like our original direction was city staff was going to bring back a recommendation of both the threshold and the percentage amount. I think I'd prefer that to leave it a little more open.
If Alicia understands where we stand on that one right now, I'm okay with that.
I think, I think we're okay.
I mean, I can't remember if people have the microphone at the beginning. We haven't invited anybody out in the public to talk on this one. It's probably time for that.
Marco Yeps Gomez, 11 North Sixth Street. Totally love it. You know, shopping local. So a couple meetings ago, I came up, and I think I was talking about like a bid. I think it was like the Center Street median or something like that. And I think, I think Councilmember Lottie Hoff mentioned like, there's like an Iowa law that prohibits us from doing that. Is that like 100% clear, or can we add this to, to this amendment or whatever to like investigate if, if we can actually also accept contract bidders locally? Just an idea, but.
I have to do a little research, but I believe it wouldn't apply to public improvements.
Yeah, okay, cool. Just try. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Your Honor, I do want to caution councilors to table and bring back and things like that. I think our staff really needs the mower bad. So we can get the mower bought today, and we can wrestle with the agenda later.
I didn't come up to speak. I came to work on the computer.
We already started the clock on you. Nobody else has jumped up to the mic, and so let's go ahead and vote.
Clarification on what we're voting on, please?
I was going to ask Alicia to do that.
This is to amend the resolution to accept the second bid from the local vendor and have staff bring back a recommendation on the local preference policy.
Okay. Roll call on that one.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Carried. On to reports. First one is IMPACT Quarterly Update Report.
We are at the mercy of technology, obviously. David Hicks, Director of YSS of Marshall County, just want to provide some updates with IMPACT. January through May, five months, we have responded to 82 total calls of service involving 164 people. Under 18, we had of those calls, 30% were under 18. Homelessness is 30% of those calls. Mental health represents 20%, and family conflict also represents 20%. So of those three issues, those are 70% of our total calls for service. 82% of the officers who responded to the initial call went back into service, so 100% there. 98% of the callers who requested services followed through with our recommendation, so good numbers there. A new stat we've been kind of tracking this year is we've got a lot of great donors for IMPACT, recognizing that homelessness is a big issue. So we have provided 19 nights of hotel stays for 14 people and one dog. Total follow-ups, in addition to the calls for service, total follow-ups, 230 follow-ups involving 350 people. And again, homelessness and mental health combined make up for 63% of those total follow-up services. So again, good numbers, and really behind those numbers are our people and stories. So I do have a story of a call we received back on May 7th. So there's a 78-year-old gentleman in Leighton, Iowa, who was supposed to be driving to Pella for a doctor appointment. This gentleman has dementia, so his daughter tracks his whereabouts on her phone. She noticed that he was not in Pella and was heading north, and finally tracked him down to entering Marshalltown. She notified the Marshalltown Police Department, gave the PD his license plate. The flock cameras hit on his license plate as he was heading up Highway 14, leaving Marshalltown. Again, he did not know where he was at. So Marshalltown Police pulled him over, assisted him at that scene, and he did not know where he was. He thought he was heading to Pella, but at this point, he is in Marshalltown. So our IMPACT advocate, Tiffany Beadle, was immediately called to visit with him, to provide some resources and support, to get in contact with the daughter, to really provide some supports for this gentleman with dementia. So, you know, we hear the flock cameras all the time of finding criminals who are, who are leaving the scene, but this was a gentleman with dementia that we certainly provided services for. And again, we were able to put a police officer back on the streets as Tiffany had to wait about 75 minutes for the daughter to arrive and while she was arranging services as well. So as much as we talk about mental health and homelessness, you know, we have situations with dementia of people not even from Marshalltown that we could provide services for. Last week, our IMPACT crew and myself and Detective Craig Lagashulte were at the National Co-Responder Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, as we were asked to present on the assessment and evaluation of co-responder programs. So myself and Dr. Ringenberg did that presentation for about 65 people. There were 1,200 people at this national conference. And really, just kind of looking back over the last four years, you know, we, we started this program with your funding four years ago with just an idea, and now we're presenting on a national scale with Marshalltown seen as, IMPACT being seen as subject matter experts in the co-responder field. So happy to present there, probably a career highlight for me personally. Just happy to exchange information with other rural co-responders across the nation who see Marshalltown as maybe a model of how they want to handle their co-responder program. So happy to answer any questions you may have, but I appreciate being here for the update.
Any questions or comments up here? Because there's a big crowd tonight, I'd love to tell the story about the night you first came here with Tupper to propose that, and what was it, 20, ask of 25,000?
We just wanted maybe, maybe 25,000 to implement an idea.
And Mr. Thompson over there asked how much it would take for the whole year, and the answer was 125,000?
150,000.
150? And there was a motion made, and it was unanimous vote to start it.
Credit to the city council for recognizing the police department and an innovative idea. We didn't have a job description written. We didn't really have outcomes built. We have built this on the fly. So really, city council, you all should be commended for being a forward-thinking council, having trust in your police department, and we're just lucky to be an agency that work, work well with the police department and provide multiple services. So we're thrilled.
You've been a pretty good neighbor next door here, too. Thanks.
We try and keep things down over there.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this one? I guess we, for reports, we don't usually ask for public comment. And if people actually knew about the program and commented, it would take a long time. And I know there's an individual in here whose family member was one of the first recipients of the program, and it was a significant help for that person, so. Okay, are you just working on the computer still?
Yes. This is one of my biggest fears.
My last two Zoom conferences, I've had to switch from computer to phone to have them work, which is a problem if you're a lawyer in the deposition or mediator. I need a seven-year-old around the house. Anybody have any seven-year-olds? But, by the way, I have an extra, because this is now being timed on the computer, I've been trying to sell this on eBay, and the first person that picks up, will you take it? Okay, good. Oh, good idea. Very good. Okay, next item is the Police Department 2024 Annual Report. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Chris Jones, Chief of Police, here in Marshalltown. This is 2024 Annual Report. I was able to distribute hard copies to everybody. You should have an electronic copy available. So as of tomorrow morning, we'll be able to make that annual report available to general media, and I'll put out information electronically. We also have that available in Spanish. So if you have any comments or questions or anything, let me know if it's not covered tonight. So 2024, for the most part, was a transition year for our agency, and when a majority of the work that we had accomplished had been closing down on some very passionate projects that Chief Tupper had in line. So with your help, we were able to bring on some technology like the flock cameras, as David has talked about. They've been very, very successful for us throughout the last year. We were also able to implement a new program with body cameras and in-car cameras, and we were able to pass those. Those are programs that he was very passionate about. One of the other things that we were able to do in 2024 was we were able to work and focus on officer wellness. And I had a conversation earlier today about our hiring status currently and did not know the general impact, because our agency has been relentless at attempting to recruit police officers to our community. And law enforcement positions in Iowa across the nation have been very difficult to fill for a variety of reasons. We are currently five officers down. We're looking for, to fill five positions. We have two officers that were recently deployed overseas on a 12-to-18-month deployment, military deployment. So we're looking at entering the summer into a deficit of seven officers. We have a general capacity of 42. I had been to many of these speeches when Chief Tupper has talked about that we have to work for 50. And I had always told him that when I get 42, we can worry about 43 before we start talking about 50. But what we are doing from the department's standpoint, what we have done for the last year is routine recruitment. We have tested well over 25 candidates. We've hired one police officer last year, Tresky. It was the only police officer that we hired in 2024. And there's a variety of reasons for that. Some of it is the physical standards that the state requires for you to be a police officer. Some of them are the educational standards, and some of them are the background standards. And we are looking at maintaining the quality of people that we're hiring here, and we're going to continue to do that. And we need the public's help at finding people that they know would be good in the position, compassionate, and fulfill all the needs that our department does and send them our way. So soon you will find QR codes on a lot of our information. We've been putting QR codes on all of our Facebook information. We just purchased QR codes for all of our squad cars that has our hiring information, and we're doing everything I can with the US military. We're doing everything that we can with colleges and other resources around the state to look at improving those for 2025. We were relatively busy. In the 30 years that I've been a police officer here for the city of Marshalltown, crime has been fairly steady. And as you look through the annual report, you'll kind of see some fluctuations here and there. Most of the fluctuations are easy to explain. You know, for example, during COVID, we had less initial contacts than normal, but we asked officers to, to be careful and- less initial contacts than normal, but we asked officers to be careful, and we're concerned about their safety, so numbers could be lower. But for the most part, general crime and calls for service numbers are fairly stable. What we have done is, even though we've had less people to work with, we've been able to handle those calls for service very efficiently with the use of the technology, but then also, we've been continually working with our, training with our staff to do our job better and more efficient. And we've added quite a few community programs. If you've paid attention to our Facebook page or social media, we're continuously out in the public. Our officers are becoming more accustomed to being involved in those programs. We're hiring people that are accustomed to being involved in those programs, and we're working more closely with the school district, we're working more closely with private and public business owners at building those bonds, because we understand that we can't necessarily do that alone. So I had taken a part in teaching classes at the high school. We have an array of officers that have been involved in junior achievement this year. We've worked with the school district through the SRO program at developing volunteer opportunities for young people, both inside the Police Department and outside the Police Department, and that will continue. As you look through the annual report, I really wanted the Council to take a look at two things that kind of stood out to me, and it really happens during the Calls for Service page, where we start to list how officers are responding and what they're required to respond to. So in my mind, the way that I look at it is I try to separate self-initiated activity and calls for service that are not self-initiated, calls that we're required to go on because we received a call for assistance or that we had to respond to, and try to decipher where those numbers are. And what you're going to end up finding out is many of the higher numbers on those calls for service are self-initiated activities, traffic stops, their Iowa Veteran Homes checks. We check the veterans home usually on at least a daily basis, for sure. We do building checks, public contacts, all of those are initiated by staff. What wasn't always initiated by staff were the high number of animal complaints that we received. There was over 1,000, 1,046 animal complaints that we dealt with last year. That could be animals running loose, could be animals barking, could be, it could be an injured animal. There are a whole array of those issues, but it does take a considerable amount of time from those other self-initiated activities. The other number that you really need to pay attention to are welfare checks, and we had 857 welfare checks, or 851, I'm sorry. And a welfare check is where somebody calls us because they feel they have no other reason, they either haven't heard from a loved one, or they have a concern about someone, and we go and check on those individuals. And many departments across the state, and many of the meetings that I've had over the last several years, is departments are going away from those welfare checks because they're not a criminal activity, and there are other ways to solve those issues. Now, the Council's support of the Impact Program has helped us quite a bit at having and being relieved from many of those calls for service and allowing the follow-up being done by our Impact Representatives. But I want you to know that if you ever do hear about those welfare checks declining in other communities, that is a very passionate part of what I believe we do here. I've been motivating to my staff to understand that we're not going to let those goes, and that's one of our general responsibilities here, is to make sure that our citizens are safe, and if they have a concern and we have time to deal with those, we will handle those. But Impact and having that program has been absolutely wonderful, and us being able to follow up with many of those welfare checks, even though it was a majority of the calls for service that we have. As of next year, what we are going to concentrate on is officer wellness. During 2024, we implemented a wellness program where we required all of our staff to have a mental health day and receive an hour session with a law enforcement psychologist. It's just a checkup, and officers will go in, talk with a psychologist that we've had contact with, and just talk. And they've been, initially wasn't necessarily received, it was questionably received by many staff, but after we got into the program, we've had 100% compliance, and we're going to turn that over into 2025 and redo those starting here in July. So from July of last year to July of this year, we've had 100% compliance from staff to be able to do those, and it's been very successful. We've worked quite a bit at concentrating and teaching our leadership staff about the benefits of rest and the benefits of allowing staff to be open about times that they need a break. So last year, we created a room in the Police Department that has no windows, it's got a recliner, it's just a place that you can go and get away if you need to, so people can kind of take a break or a mental break. 12-hour shifts are taxing for people, especially those night shift concerns, and the last thing that I want to do is have an officer get hurt handling a call for service or in a traffic accident. So supervisors have been definitely allowing our staff to take the breaks that they need to take, and then also, we implemented the ability to potentially work out, if there's time permitting, to go in and just take a workout break. So what we're really concentrating on is making sure that we're open to different suggestions. We have a wellness committee that's in place, and they have wonderful opportunities for people to continually expand on that, and we will for this year. The success of what we had last, in 2024, is we had two homicide investigations that were solved very, very quickly. Our staff did a great job at apprehending those individuals. We also helped with another homicide investigation that was out in the county. That subject was apprehended. Their community engagement was a positive. We've gotten out probably twice as much last year as we had in the past with many of our activities and building those relationships. And really, our only challenge that we're looking for right now, what we're concentrating on, is recruitment. And you're going to see as much as we possibly can, you know, officers getting out there and taking their own initiatives at finding ways to be able to get staff and build our staff. It's very important that we can try to get to that 42 numbers as quickly as we can. What I would love to do is, I would love to put another SRO in our school district if we can, but we can't not do that until we can get up to full staff. So having read the report, and if there are any questions?
Questions or comments up here?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Chris, thanks.
Yeah.
And thanks for your time earlier today.
No problem.
With my stupid suggestions. Hey, can you clarify, so the two highest calls are traffic stops, obviously, and then a building check. Can you clarify for me and everybody else? You said those are self-initiated, the building checks?
Building checks are self-initiated.
So can you kind of, like, what's a normal building check? Is there, just go in, check and lock doors, or?
If it's a business owner, a business is open, they'll go in and introduce themselves or talk and check on a business owner, say, for example, a convenience store in the middle of the night. Building checks can also be rattling doors for businesses, just to check for burglaries or checking around a large business to make sure that nobody's tampering with the building or in the area. And all of those are logged the same way?
And on a lighter note, we earlier approved the HR policy. So will Officer Atlas and Atlas Timber, will they be getting a buck more an hour for speaking two languages, since I think they speak Dutch?
Well, Dutch, oh.
Yeah, that's where they, oh, I don't know where these came from, but that's where they originated, was in Belgium. So do they, do they get that dollar an hour? They're not union, are they?
Well, yes, they are union, and I'll take it on as advisement.
Thank you.
Anybody else up here?
Okay.
I guess.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I wanted to mention, the Citizens Academy is another one of those outreach things that everybody who's taken that class has reported back they were glad they did. And so if you haven't done it, that is a great opportunity to figure out what we have going here in Marshalltown that should make us an easy place to recruit to for the force and the way they handle things, and the building that they're in, frankly, thank you to the voters years ago. You mentioned the task force, I was going to wait till we were talking about cats to mention this, but it seemed like an appropriate time now, too. I think I've got enough, I've got about 10 names, give or take one or two, to be on the task force, so it's going to look at our animals-at-large and other ordinances for the city. So we are working on that one, but we may be including cats as well in there as dogs. And then I wanted to mention, two in the same connection as the flock cameras, there's a Crime Stoppers program in town. We had the death of the president, and we have had one of the members of that board move out. It is a very low time commitment, but it's been a very successful program. So I'm taking volunteers who would like to serve on the Crime Stoppers, and what it does is helps raise the money just every once in a while, and then approves the tip money that goes to the people that give the anonymous tips. So my email and phone number are in the newspaper about five times a week, so contact me if you have an interest in that. Good report, as always, with our Police Department, we're proud of what you do. So thank you. Okay, on to motions, just one of those.
Motion to approve a temporary outdoor service area for the Marshalltown Elks Lodge Number 312 for the 130th Anniversary Celebration on July 12th.
Move for approval.
Second. Any discussion? I doubt there will be. This is pretty, this is an annual request, I think?
This is a new event, but at the last meeting, the Council approved to have open containers on the public ways for the event, so this is to approve the actual application with the Iowa ABD for the temporary outdoor service area.
I guess I knew it sounded familiar somehow. Any discussion up here? Out there? Roll call.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Bonseca?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Carried, on to resolutions.
Resolution approving a lease agreement with the Central Iowa River Gun Club.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Okay. Discussion up here. No discussion, it's in the agenda, so we appear now what it is, so I was going to open it up to the public. Any public discussion?
Steve Guile, 606 West South Ridge Road, and currently the President of the Central Iowa River Gun Club. Little information about who we are and what we do. Viaduct and Center Street was built in 1951. In 1961, the gun club was granted permission to use that space. The club's goal was and still is to provide a safe-as-possible shooting facility that could be enjoyed by individuals, families, and organizations. Over the 64 years that we've been in that facility, our range has been offered to the Junior Rifle Program, Junior CBs, Boy Scouts, 4H Youth Program, ROTC Youth Program, Women, Intro to Firearms Classes, Gun Safety and Marksmanship Classes, Concealed Weapons and Shooting Educations, sanctioned matches, and state championships, along with an organized Winter Pistol League. The majority of these competitors and these events come from outside our community, so they bring revenue, excuse me, revenue to the city. Our doors are always open to any requests for use of the facility that promotes the shooting sports, especially if there's youth involved. Turning this construction site into usable space over the years has not been an easy or cheap task. Building, maintaining, and improving this facility has cost us over $100,000 since we've been in there. Last year, our annual cost of doing business was $11,700. We currently had 116 active members at $100 a year, that's $11,600. You can see that profit is not our major priority. We do carry $2 million worth of insurance at an annual cost of $4,000, and we've never had a recordable incident. We are very much appreciative to the city allowing us to reside in this space for the past 64 years, and we hope we can continue to provide a place that can be enjoyed by many for years to come. A special thank, thank you to the Council members, Mitchell, Nichols, Bonseca, and Thompson, as well as City Administrator Webb, who elected to come down and meet us, see the facility, and kind of learn about what we do, and get to know more about what's going on before they cast a vote. I do, however, believe we are being unfairly charged on our new lease proposal. After all, we are what is a market fair value for an absolutely useless space. We have incurred major expenses over the years, basically due to leaking expansion joints. In other words, the house we leased from the city has a hole in the roof. President Randy Hall will share more details in his presentation. Thank you very much.
I'm Randy Hall, 2808 Arnold Drive. As Steve said, I'm the Vice President of the club. The first thing I'd like to talk about is just the condition of the range when we moved in back in 1961. It was basically a construction site that consisted of mud gravel, chunks of concrete, and no floor. When you came in, you had to step down to get into the building. There was no lighting to speak of, no heat, no air conditioning. Basically, it was just a damp, dark cave. The only reason that the city used it was a designated fallout shelter at the time. There were barrels of food, medicine, and water that were stored in there. From that point, all the improvements were done by the club. Club members brought in field dirt, one wheelbarrow full at a time to fill the floor up to the door. All the cement that was poured was put in by the club at our expense, at our labor. In 64 years, we have never requested city funds or help. It's all been done by us. I believe it was the year 2000 when the Viaduct underwent the repairs for the expansion joints in the sidewalks. Per our lease agreement, we took down our firing line, all of our equipment, and everything that needed to be out of the way. By the time we cleared out, cleaned up the mess that was left from construction, and got everything rebuilt and back in order, it cost us between $7,400 and $7,500. We paid for all of that. Came out of our funds, we didn't ask for any assistance to do that repair. When these new repairs that we've got coming up, come up, we're going to have to remove everything again. When Heather came in with the consultants and contractors, they showed us what they needed, pretty much everything comes out again. Since the last repair, we've put in improvements like a better air handling system, more efficient heat, air conditioning, so we could do things in there in the summer before you couldn't stand to be in there in the summer. We're going to have to have the professionals that did that work come in and take it out, put it back up. We can't do that, we don't have the expertise this time, so it's going to cost a lot more, we estimate. It's going to be well over $10,000 this time. We've always felt the city was being very fair with us on the lease because we weren't incurring any expense for the city. We were constantly improving the space, and it was really useless for anything else once our equipment was out. We felt in return, we were providing a resource for the cities of Marshalltown who are interested in the shooting sports. We were also giving access to the organizations that Steve mentioned at no cost. When they come in, we provide all the people to support that, to make sure they're safe. Our guys volunteer to help. We only ask that we aren't required to pay higher costs on a lease for a space that has no other apparent value, especially with the huge expense that we've got coming up here in the next year or two when that repair comes in. It's going to cost us a lot of money. So I want to thank everybody that came down and took a look at it, talked with us about how it works, saw what we really got down there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Your Honor, I'd make a motion to amend the rent to $120 a year instead of what's stated in the resolution.
I'll second that. Discussion about the amendment to 120.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
You may.
The memo says the proposed lease agreement was agreed by all parties. What changed?
The gun club, I did, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe their board did vote to approve the agreement, so that's why I added that they were amenable to signing it.
If I may, Your Honor?
You may.
What's changed for me personally is, and I've said this as a serious joke, that based on fair market value, the, we don't have any fire-breathing dragons in Marshalltown that would want to rent that space to live in, and after being in there, if I felt I could go lower, I would. There is nobody in my mind that would use that space. And I think, you know, I sat on that committee with the attorney, you know, to balance out these leases, and I just think this is one that's an oddity. It sits by itself, there is no fair market value, so I just feel that after seeing what it is and what everyone has done on their own expense, I mean, we're a terrible landlord if you really want to get to the bottom of it, that's where I came up with, you know, just $10 a month, $120.
Other discussion up here? Other discussion up here? Let's call the roll on the motion to amend from 300 to 120.
Fonseca? Yes. Kel?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Carried. Do we need to vote on the motion as amended now, or just?
Yes.
We've got our answer. Okay. Roll call on that one.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca? Yes. Kel?
Yes.
You know, if I could just ask everybody to say aye, we could leave within 90 minutes, and I wouldn't get towed. You know? Okay, that carried. Very good. Thank you. I'm accustomed to inviting people not to stick around for the rest of the meeting if they only came for one thing, and I suspect some of you are with the gun club, and if you don't want to stick around, you're welcome to go, and we are not offended by your departure. So, thank you. Next resolution.
Resolution approving agreement between the city of Marshalltown and Hildy de Bruin Art and Design LLC for the Emerson Bridge Railings Final Commission.
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Thank you. There is a second.
Second.
The discussion on this resolution.
This, I developed this council item. I don't have anything to add beyond what was in the memo, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments up here? Any questions or comments out in the public about this one? Roll call.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca? Yes. Kel?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
That carried. Very good. Onto ordinances, and we do have several of those tonight, some including the public hearings. What's our first one?
Yes, our first one is a public hearing and ordinance for 15101 to amend the official zoning map for 915, 917, and 919 South Center Street from medium-density residential zoning district to mixed-use zoning district. Second reading.
The public hearing is open at 6:27 PM, and it's time for staff review.
Good evening. Clayton Under, Assistant Director, Housing Community Development. Just as a general statement for this, plus your, so for your next, this item plus your next three, I'm going to give a brief summary, since this is the public hearing, for the benefit of the members of the public that maybe didn't hear your first reading. This first item is a rezoning from, for the three houses just south of Taco John's, 915, 917, 919, South Center Street. The city currently owns the north and south property, private ownership of the center by Michelle and Dean Lawthers. We did set a public hearing for your next meeting to consider a purchase agreement on the two city-owned parcels. Those would be sold to the Lawthers as well, with the intent that the 915 South Center Street, the one closest to Taco John's, would either be moved to an alternate location or demolished. The one on the corner, 919, would be demolished. They do not have an intent to try to move that. So that's kind of the intended use of it, with the properties then to be consolidated together for a redevelopment site. The properties, they are now, uh, shown on the comprehensive plan as mixed-use, uh, mixed-use land use. And the currently zoned medium-density residential proposed to be changed to mixed-use, with the condition that the existing structures cannot be used for non-residential purposes. The, the non-residential uses of the mixed-use would only become applicable if the properties are demolished and there's new development in place. That would open up, you know, vertical mixed-use, non-residential, or standalone multifamily-type uses of that site, kind of a higher and better use along an arterial roadway here in town. We've received no public comments to date on this. I have provided notice to all, all property owners within 250 feet plus the width of right of way. Notice has been in the newspaper. We've had a sign out on the street. I have received numerous phone calls, just kind of general questions about what's being proposed. I have explained, but I just told you here, and no one's submitted any actual comments as follow-up to that. They just had some general inquiries. Planning and zoning commission has reviewed this and has recommended approval. Happy to answer any questions you may have at this time. We're going to further detail if needed.
Actually, my cheat sheet says first I have to ask clerk if she received any written comments.
No, Your Honor.
And now we open it to the public comment, actually.
Dean Lawther, 614 Fremont Street. I just wanted to say thank you to all the city council members who voted in favor of selling me the properties at 915 and 919 South Center Street. I think if you would have went another direction on the sale of the properties and accepted the higher bid, you would have ended up with a quote from Michael Ladihoff, a hodgepodge kind of thing. And to validate your decision, as soon as the two properties are put into my name and the property description is updated, I will be putting all three property lots up for sale as one commercial lot with Paula Price from No Limits Real Estate. Hopefully, this will get rid of a longstanding eyesore on one of Marshalltown's busiest streets, and possibly we will have a current, small-business buy and expand, or an out-of-town business buy this lot and move into town. Maybe this will even bring a new business to town and help expand our business district. Either way, this should be a win-win for the residents and other businesses of Marshalltown. Thank you.
Thank you. The cheat sheet says the next thing I'm supposed to do is note the time that the public hearing is closed, which is 6:31 PM, and then I'm to solicit a motion and council member discussion.
I so move.
Second.
Discussion up here. Seeing and hearing none.
Your Honor, may I?
You may.
I have a question for Clayton. Could you let us know what possibilities there would be with it being switched to mixed-use zoning? Like what, what could all be done on those three lots in the future?
There's a lot of uses. Restaurant uses, retail service-based uses, could allow for some residential-type uses as well.
But no single-family anymore? It would be multifamily?
Single-family is still allowed within the mixed-use district.
Okay. Sounds good. Just want to know what could happen.
It's a very comprehensive list, and unfortunately, I don't have it memorized.
No, it's okay. I mean, I think the top, the top ones, yeah, okay.
But anything except cat houses? Is that, is that the? Any other comments up here? We already had the time for public comment. Let's call the roll.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca? Yes. Kel?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Carried for a second reading. Very good. Okay. Next one. One able.
Public hearing ordinance 15102 to amend the official zoning map for lots 1, 2, 13, 14, 15, and 16, Block 1 Woods Addition to Marshall, Marshall County, Iowa, and lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, Block 2 Woods Addition to Marshall, Marshall County, Iowa, and lots 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, Block 3 Woods Addition to Marshall, Marshall County, Iowa, from median-density residential zoning district to general industrial zoning district. Second reading.
Takes me back to those days of reading title opinions and abstracts. The public hearing is now open at 6:33 PM, and staff review time.
The subject properties are shown on our comprehensive plan now as light industrial, and this is a proposal to rezone from medium-density residential to general industrial with conditions. Those conditions being some of the less compatible land uses with residential being prohibited, specifically those that would typically be allowed by special use permit would be prohibited. That's going to include things such as correctional facilities, heavy industrial uses. It will still allow for some lighter industrial uses, such as perhaps a mechanic shop, but really the intended use of the site is for off-street parking to support Marshalltown company's expansion. I have provided notice to all property owners within 250 feet plus right of way. We did post in the newspaper, and there were signs out on the site. I have received numerous questions on, on this one, just general inquiries of what's being proposed. None of that generated any follow-up comments, just the, the general inquiries themselves. And I do believe we have representatives of, of the applicant for this one in the audience as well, should there be questions specifically on how they intend to use the site. But with that, happy to go into detail answering questions when the time's proper.
Let's see if the clerk received any written comments.
No, Your Honor.
Time for a public comment, if any. If none, I'll close the public hearing at 6:35 PM and solicit a motion, and then have discussion about it.
I so move.
Second.
Roll call.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca? Yes. Kel?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Risking my parking problem in 90 minutes, I have to say that site is looking so much nicer and bigger, and, and the city's got a commitment to make sure we don't flood it, as best we can stop it from flooding. It's, uh, they're expanding significantly, and it's the type of development we love to see around here. So, glad that this went through. All right, one able, next one.
Public hearing ordinance 15103 to amend the code of ordinances, city of Marshalltown, Iowa, Chapter 156, zoning, self-serve storage, mini warehouse. Second reading.
Public hearing is open at 6:36 PM. Staff review.
Uh, this is a proposal brought forward by the new ownership of the mall property, while it is intended to support a proposal for mini storage at, at that facility. It's important to note that this, uh, this zoning text amendment would apply citywide to all properties zoned, general commercial, so it is broader, but it was brought forward by a specific property owner. We do have representatives of them in the audience this evening that could answer any questions that may come up about how they specifically would like to utilize this. But currently, mini warehouse is not a permitted land use in the general commercial zoning district. This would allow for the use by special use permit, so it'd have to go to Planning and Zoning Commission, and then Board of Adjustment for final approval. It would include conditions that the land use can't be visible from an existing road that's planned, existing or planned road, which is classified as major or minor arterial on the city's adopted comprehensive plan. That'd be such as South Center Street. The, all the units would have to be internally accessed, so no external access for individual units, and outdoor storage would be prohibited. I did post notice in the newspaper on this as a zoning text amendment applying citywide. We don't have a geographic area to send specific notice to. The malls, should this pass, would go for special use permit. Neighboring property owners will receive notice of, of that action before the Planning and Zoning Commission and Board of Adjustment, or for any future proposals that may come forward. With that, happy to answer any questions or go into detail when the time is proper.
Again, my cheat sheet says we asked the clerk if there were any written comments.
No, Your Honor.
Then we open it to public comment. Seeing nobody jumping up to comment, I'll close the meeting, the hearing, rather, at 6:38 PM, and solicit a motion and council discussion.
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Any discussion? Often doesn't happen in second and third reading, so let's call a roll.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca? Yes. Kel?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Onto the next one.
Public hearing and ordinance 15104 to amend the code of ordinances, city of Marshalltown, Iowa, Chapter 156, zoning, accessory dwelling units, Board of Adjustment Procedures, and residential building materials. Second reading.
Public hearing is open at 6:39 PM. Staff review.
This is a proposal of three legislative amendments that have come from the Iowa State Legislature, one from 2024 that didn't get adopted into our code, and then two from the 2025 legislative session. The residential building exteriors is, relates to residential buildings, 12 units or less. We cannot restrict the building materials in a way that's more restrictive than the state building code. So pretty much we have to allow materials. We can't, you know, say, hey, you, you can't have vinyl. You have to have brick. We can't do that. So that's the residential building materials. Accessory dwelling units, that comes out of this legislative session, that all single-family lots must be allowed to have an accessory dwelling unit, and that unit can be the greater size of 1,000 square feet or 50% of the primary unit size. So if you have a 4,000-square-foot primary unit, you can have a 2,000-square-foot accessory unit. They would have to comply with all the same standards as a single-family dwelling. And finally, the Board of Adjustment Powers and Procedures, uh, state has allowed for the use of a practical difficulties test in lieu of the current unnecessary hardships test, uh, which just really kind of makes it a little easier for folks to get a variance. That, they still have to prove that there's something unique, that it would cause an unnecessary burden, and it's not an automatic give, but they don't have to go to the extreme threshold of showing that I have no economic use of my property, as is the current threshold. So it does make it just a little easier for allowances of variances. Did post notice in the newspaper, again, as a zoning text amendment, no geographic area, so no signs, no mailers put out there because it's, applies citywide. Happy to answer questions or go into further detail as the time is proper.
Any written comments to the clerk?
No, Your Honor.
Any public comment? Close the hearing at 6:41 PM. Solicite a motion.
I so move.
Second.
Roll call.
Fonseca? Yes. Kel?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Carried. Onto number five.
Ordinance 15105 to amend the code of ordinances, city of Marshalltown, Iowa, Chapter 130, Offenses Against Peace and Safety, Section 130.018, fireworks. Second reading.
And we don't need a public hearing for this one?
No.
All right. The, is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion up here? Any public discussion? Roll call.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca? Yes. Kel?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Quickly, coming up on July 4th, does anybody wish, does anybody wish to move to waive the third reading?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca? Yes. Kel?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Carried. Next ordinance.
Ordinance 15106 to amend the code of ordinances, city of Marshalltown, Iowa, by amending by amending Chapter 52 sewers and sewage disposal, by amending Section 52.029 user charge system, second reading.
Move to approve, your honor.
Second.
Discussion up here? Public discussion? My parking spot's looking better. Roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca? Yes.
Carried. Number seven.
Ordinance 15107 to amend the code of ordinances, City of Marshalltown, Iowa, by amending Chapter 53 stormwater, by amending Section 53.024 exemptions and credits available, second reading.
Move to approve, your honor.
Second.
Discussion? Anywhere, anybody?
You requesting a filibuster, your honor?
No, not really. And no, there's no basketball game tonight to watch, so. Any discussion up here? Because I think maybe somebody in the public might want to discuss this one. Okay, public discussion.
Erin Carpenter, 802 North Fourth Street. As a member of the Stormwater Advisory Committee, I understand why the, why waiving internal stormwater fees for city facilities might make sense under current budget pressure, especially when it amounts to moving money from one pocket to another. But that said, I want to raise two concerns. First is that the importance of stormwater management is too often overlooked until something floods or something breaks. And Fund 740 is already in deficit. If we cut off internal contributions, the pressure to raise rates later on becomes more likely. And unless we actively make an effort to make the fee structure more equitable, that burden will likely fall on residents and small businesses. Second, Marshalltown is already an overburdened community disproportionately affected by disinvestment, severe weather threats, and infrastructure gaps. It receives too little support from the state. So I'd like to ask you to be cautious about shifting even small financial burdens onto people who can least afford them. When we talk about stormwater, we're really talking about infrastructure that intersects with public health, safety, and equity. For example, expanding our urban tree canopy, something that helps absorb stormwater, also reduces crime rates and slows traffic speeds. These are well-documented benefits with real impacts on quality of life. So underfunding stormwater isn't just a drainage issue, it's a missed opportunity to invest in safer, healthier neighborhoods. As we continue to make some of these very exciting new developments in our community, necessitating zoning changes, ordinance changes, I hope that we can proactively require mitigation for any additional impervious surfaces. Trees, green infrastructure, pervious materials, they shouldn't be an afterthought. The Lynn Creek Trail had great investment, Riverview Park, same. These two projects are deeply, intrinsically connected with water. And if, let's marry our investment in those resources with, in these concrete and creative projects with a commitment to clean water and healthy riparian ecosystems. This means thinking upstream about how we manage our stormwater plant buffers and reduce runoff to our waterways. I'm not opposing this ordinance, but I am asking the city to commit to a fair, long-term strategy for stormwater investment. It's necessary infrastructure and it deserves to be treated like an essential service that it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. And again, thank you for serving on the committees you do and what you've been doing around town for us. Any other public comment? Roll call.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca? Yes. Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Very good, that carried. Onto discussion items, I get to read those feral cat support petition.
I might not be helping your 90 minutes here, but I'll go, I'll do my best. And interestingly enough, ordinance 1510-
Oh, I'm sorry, I need to-
I'm sorry, Carlagould, 2708 Garwin Road, which is just north of town. And ordinance 15102 impacts feral cats. We've got some feral cats living down in that area. And oddly enough, storm sewers also impact a lot of feral cats because a lot of our feral cats live in the storm sewers during the winter to keep warm. So that said, again, good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Early in 2024, I became aware of a group of volunteers here in town operating under the name of the Marshalltown Feral Support Group. It's run by Stephen Havens, who's sitting over here with me tonight. Some history, Marshalltown Feral Support Group is a nonprofit organization that was established as a 501(c)(3) earlier in 2025, but it's been serving our community since 2022. It's run 100% by volunteers. The goal of the group is to provide a humane and effective solution to manage the feral cat population of Marshalltown, which we estimate to be around 650 to 750 cats, but it's growing every day. We have, we focus on four areas. Trap, neuter, return, TNR, veterinary care, community education, and rehabilitation and rehoming. Trap, neuter, and return is the first part. It's a humane and effective method of managing feral cat populations. It's practiced around the United States as well as around the world. It's supported by all credible animal protection agencies, including the ASPCA, the Humane Society of the United States, the American Animal Hospital Association, and the National Animal Care Association, as well as hundreds of TNR groups across the nation. The process involves trapping their feral cats, sometimes non semi-feral cats, having them spayed or neutered and vaccinated, and then returning them to their original location. This not only prevents further breeding, but it stabilizes the cat colonies and improves their overall health and behavior. Neutering in particular results in a lot less fighting, traveling, and bad behavior by the males. Since 2022, and as of last Wednesday, 301 cats have been spayed or neutered under this program. And we have upwards of 187 that are currently on our waiting list. Veterinary care is the second step. As part of the TNR process, we are able to test and treat the cats for various illnesses and parasites. Diagnosing, treating, and providing lifesaving vaccines is a crucial part of our mission and an integral part of caring for the population as a whole. Some illnesses such as FELV, which is feline leukemia, and FIP, which is feline infectious peritonitis, are terminal. There is no treatment. And we are forced to humanely euthanize rather than allowing them to suffer. Cats who test positive for these infections cannot be re-released as they would just be spreading the disease and suffering their eventual death. In some situations, like with kittens, we can find them homes where they are the only cat or there are other positive infected cats that they can live with. But those homes are very difficult to find. These cats can lead normal lives with monitoring and vet care as required. With other diseases like FIV, which is feline immunodeficiency, cats can live for years with the right care. When the cats are vetted and returned to their outside home as part of the TNR program, they are also ear tipped so that we can identify them and not waste resources trying to catch them again. The third part, community, education, and involvement. Raising awareness and educating the community about feral cats is vital to the success of our program. We engage with residents and local businesses through social media and local events. We strive to create a sense of understanding, responsibility, and compassion towards the feral cat population throughout the community. We have a website, www.marshalltownfsg.com. We have a Facebook page. We hold fundraising events. We walked in the Oktoberfest parade. We have garage sales. We have restaurant events like at Taco John's where we get a percentage of the sales. We have shirt sales, shirt sales. Everybody out there. And we also have two can and bottle collections, bins at local businesses, Larry Tire, Larry's Tire and Towing, and then fencing solutions, which raises about $100, $150 a week. We have a drop-off location at Jeff Linton State Farm for foster and colony supplies, so food, litter, treats, anything that people want to donate. And we also provide material, informational brochures, postcards, banners. I've given some of those to you tonight as part of the proposal. Again, all of these are designed, created, paid for, and maintained by volunteers and donations. Rehabilitate and rehome, that's number four. We currently have over 20 cats and kittens in foster care in the community. Donations of supplies, again, food, litter, treats, et cetera, are provided to help the fosters care for the cats and kittens in their care. And we provide veterinary care as well through Central Iowa Veterinary in Melbourne, Iowa. We showcase these fosters on our website. We create flyers in order to try to find them homes. We are currently working on an adoption process, which will involve a goodwill donation and a spay-neuter vaccination contract. We also have colonies of cats and kittens that are cared for by volunteers all over town. A lot of these people pay out of pocket to support their colonies, but we do offer help for food and supplies for them as well. Daily challenges. Let me start by clarifying something that I think might be a misconception. The contract that the City of Marshalltown has with the Animal Rescue League is for domesticated animals, AKA pets, that get loose. It does not cover feral cats, and I don't think a lot of people understand that, so I wanted to make sure that that was clear tonight. There's a huge difference between a stray cat and a feral cat. And if you ever have tried to catch a feral cat, you would know exactly what I'm talking about. The main reason is that feral cats, once aged to a certain point, are not easily adoptable. If you've ever tried to catch or contain one, like I said, you'd understand what I'm talking about. There are exceptions, but those stories include somebody that really takes a concern about a particular cat and works with them to domesticate them. That's not the norm by any means. And that's just something that the ARL can't provide at that level. They cannot take, they don't have the time to take a completely feral cat and try to make it a domesticated cat. Even if they did have the time, a lot of them, it's just not going to work. They do take in, the ARL does take in small kittens, especially when they get calls from people that the mother has abandoned them or the mother was killed. So the ARL does take in some kittens. I've fostered for them in the past. I know they get a lot and I know they have a lot in foster care right now. Too many people think if they're by themselves, the kittens have been abandoned. That's not the case. A lot of times, the mom's out roaming around. So we encourage through all of our Facebook pages, the Feral Support Group, the Marshalltown Lost and Found Animals, which I am an admin. The ARL, I know on their site, they promote the fact that leave these kittens where they are. Mom is there, just leave them alone. So we do try to get people and emphasize that they don't need to bring all those kittens to us. That said, once those kittens are weaned, the best chance of getting them off the streets and finding them homes happens at six to eight weeks old, which is where fosters come into the picture, whether it's through the ARL or through us, the group. As I'm sure you can guess, people seem to either love or hate feral cats. We hear it all the time. And I'm sure you're all thinking a lot of things in your head right now that we hear all the time. Some people think we should, we shouldn't be feeding them. They are wild animals, they should be left to fend for themselves. The problem is that people have been feeding and watering these cats most of their lives, since they were kittens. They're not wild animals. They did not just evolve and show up. People turned them out. They were in a home, people turned them out. Across town, there are ongoing feuds and harassments happening between neighbors, tenants, landlords. Feral cats look for places to take shelter. And these homes, garages, and sheds with broken windows and doors, along with a lot of the abandoned homes in town, offer very easy access. The landlord expects the tenant to get rid of these cats. They don't belong to the tenant. And so the tenant calls us, expecting us to come and take care of the cats because now it's, it's our problem. We get a lot of those calls to remove the cats, saying they're our responsibility. But the reality is, is that until the access issues are addressed, they will continue to get into those structures. Trailer parks threatening to evict people because they are caught feeding a feral cat. Again, those cats were more than likely turned out at some point by a human, and they've been being fed and watered all these years. Almost daily, we receive complaints from citizens about how the feral cats are destroying their property, how they're a nuisance, how they're killing birds, squirrels, rabbits. People need to understand that they are also helping keep those pests at bay. Mice, rats, groundhogs, snakes, moles, keeping those other populations under control. Not just by eating them, but there are studies that show that their very presence, their scent helps prevent infestations. There are several studies that can be done to show that removing the feral cats from a community can and will allow the population of those pests to get out of control. We get threats from people in person via Facebook, via text message, via phone calls to handle the situation or they will do it themselves. And we know there have been people who have shot, poisoned, and tortured cats around town. Putting antifreeze in their drinking water, destroying cat homes in the colonies, shooting glass marbles at them. It's not okay. It's animal abuse and cruelty. And we need to support from our local government and law enforcement to engage, educate, and enforce the laws around this. We get calls from people about cats and kittens almost getting hit or hit in the street. But when we go to investigate, catch them, and in some cases even get them spayed or neutered, we later forced, we are later forced by law enforcement to return them to the resident because they claim them as their pets. Yet they refuse to vaccinate or spay or neuter them or take responsibility in any way, and instead just let them run. Sometimes we're talking about dozens of cats and kittens. We need help finding a solution for this issue and are open to suggestions in getting these locations, basically unattended colonies, under control. In two weeks, I've personally taken in eight kittens. Three from over on Taft Street because a neighbor didn't want them on his property. He pounded on his neighbor's door, basically threw them at her and demanded that she get rid of them. And five from over on 12th Avenue where a semi-feral cat had given birth and her caretaker didn't know what to do with them because they aren't big enough to go to the ARL yet. In both cases, we are able, we were able to catch the mothers and get them spayed. And now we just have to either find homes for the kittens or keep them safe and fed until hopefully the ARL can take them in. We get weekly calls from citizens about injured cat. One just last week that was found under a wheel at the high school, had a bleeding leg. Another trapped in Swift Greenhouse with a broken leg that we ended up having to euthanize. One found in a basement of an abandoned house that was dragging both legs and had a cancerous tumor on its stomach. We ended up euthanizing that one as well. And that's just within the past few weeks. We frequently get calls about deceased animals, dogs, and cats that need to be picked up and disposed of. For these cases, we work with the ARL to take care of their remains. Most of the people either know that we work with ferals or they contact me through the Marshalltown Lost and Found Pets or through the Feral Group. But, or sometimes it's, they've called the police several times and they just haven't had a response yet. So we'll go out and get them. Some financial information. In 2003, 23, sorry, we spent, the Feral Group spent $8,658 at Central Iowa Vet in Melbourne. In 2024, that amount was $34,999. And in 2025, so far this year, we've spent $13,959. If that keeps on track, we are looking at spending $33,502. All costs, all of those expenses are currently covered by donations and fundraising. Our ask, as shown in the proposal that I've provided, we are asking for a commitment from the city for $15,000 per year for the next three years. We can provide yearly updates as requested. At the end of those three years, we can reassess the status of the feral population. Those funds will be designated for the TNR portion of the program, along with providing the required recommended veterinary care and euthanasia as needed. We currently have an agreement with Central Iowa Veterinary Services in Melbourne for eight spays and neuters per week. It's not a lot. And that includes vaccines, testing, and emergency evaluation care at an agreed-upon pricing. We recently just started working with the Iowa Humane Alliance in Cedar Rapids to coordinate some low-cost spays and neuters at about $50 per animal. That, there would be an extra charge a little bit for vaccines and things like that. But our first group will actually be heading to Cedar Rapids tomorrow. We've got four that Stephen will be attempting to catch tonight. There are other local veterinarians that could, we could utilize as well. The cost would likely be a bit higher, but this additional funding would allow us to spay and neuter more cats overall. We are somewhat limited today because we trap using the just-in-time inventory for anybody in business, which means that we're normally trapping the night before. This is due both to limitations created by not having a facility to house the cats and frankly, the cat's willingness to get caught. We do maintain a list of cats who are easily catchable as well in case we need to fill some slots if we don't catch the one we're after. But sometimes those don't work out either. Our goal at some point is to have a facility or option for housing cats prior to and after surgery, but that's a conversation for later. I need a drink, just a sec. All right. So for now, we are anticipating that $15,000 from you could effectuate anywhere from 75 to 150 additional spays and neuters along with vaccinations, which would make a huge difference. We could basically take rid, take care of that waiting list and get those done. One final item. From about April to September, we got a lot of calls from the community about kittens being born to feral or semi-feral moms, like the eight that I currently have in my house. Obviously, our focus is getting these moms spayed. However, with the kittens, we do have an opportunity to work with the ARL to get them fixed and then adopted, which I mentioned previously. This is not part of their contract with the city, but they recognize the huge challenge around having so many kittens and have expressed a willingness to work with us in this effort. But this requires us to remove them from the streets once they are old enough to eat on their own and house them until they're at least four pounds, which is what they need to weigh before they can be spayed or neutered. It also gives us the opportunity to socialize them and get them used to being inside a home. But this requires a lot of foster homes, which we just don't have. We'd like to be able to provide a site where multiple kittens can be housed. We have begun looking at options and have put feelers out there for donations from group members, citizens, and local businesses to either purchase or build a movable structure for this purpose. When not in use, it could be stored somewhere. We would like to request the city provide an additional $2,000 in funds to help us get this purchased and set up. This is outlined in the proposal as well. As of this morning, we've raised about $1,200 in funds and a commitment from a local citizen for building materials. Other things to consider, on this last page, I promise, mayor. If the Feral Group can absorb more of the kitten situations, it could help the ARL with their overpopulation issues, which helps the community. And by funneling the kittens through their adoption process, we will be able to ensure that kittens being adopted will not be making more kittens. We as a group cannot enforce that. We can have them sign every contract we can, but we cannot enforce that. With our adoption process and limited number of fosters, we just aren't able to keep them until they're big enough to spay and neuter. So a lot of times, we have been adopting them out prior to that wait and we just rely on those people to keep their word and get those kittens spayed or neutered. We've implemented a contract, but we aren't able to legally enforce it, like I said. And although I wasn't able to verify, the chief of police mentioned animal calls. I don't know if we've had as many cat attacks in town as dog attacks, but I know that I did call the police last week when I had to go over to Taft Street. So I know there was one call. And like I said, I wasn't able to confirm how many calls they do get. But, you know, if we can hopefully take care of some of these issues, it will hopefully keep the police from having to get involved in those. Thank you for your time tonight. I would now, I don't know if we have time for Stephen- I don't know if we have time for Stephen to say a few words or not. Would that, is that okay?
We do.
Okay. Thank you very much. Maybe he can tell you about his trapping tonight.
Stephen Havens, 1113 Fremont Street. I've lived in Marsh Town all my life, and I started trapping cats in 2018 for the TNR that was started after the 2018 tornado. We had a ton of cats get out because the houses weren't intact anymore. Cats were getting out everywhere. There was dogs, they came back right away. We caught like 28 cats, I think, on Bromley Street. A lot of them weren't the cats we were after. A lot of the neighbors didn't appreciate us fixing their cats, but they didn't have a collar, or microchip, or any way to tell, so luckily they didn't, whatever. But anyway, I've just personally seen places like Off-Center Street, Old Godfrey Motors. I worked with Toby and Kara Jackson, who ran the TNR, to get over 43 cats out of there. And now there's zero, and I'm just, you know, proud of that because it was just, it took two, three years to get them out. I mean, we had people come from Ankeny to adopt kittens. Anyway, but it's all about the one that got away. There was one that got away in 2018, and I didn't see it for a while, and it kept busy. Went and had kittens at the South Ridge Car Wash, two litters around the mall, and then one at the pond, and then two other litters up around the Canaan Drive, whatever that, between the two ponds, that circle community, and then over by John Deere. So he had 30 kittens all at once, just to do to one cat. All of them just looked like him. And anyway, I finally caught him and got many of those cats homes. But that's, those moms can have three litters a year, so if I don't fix him, that's 90 cats a year from one male. Just going up and down that creek system, visiting every female along the way in food dish. And he was positive, and we ended up euthanizing him eventually. But I could just see what one male can do if we don't fix him, and it keeps me busy fixing them all. But my problem is, people that want to have a colony and not fix it, and they want to claim ownership, I think they should claim a payment of the bill, or at least have, be kind of forced to work with us, because it's not fair for the neighbors to have them under their car hood, or under their trailer, or under their porch, being born just because the neighbor doesn't see it as an issue. And I think if they want to claim ownership, they should have to pay for it. So that's just what I've been doing, and what they do all the time on a daily basis, and just repopulating if we don't do something about it, and just want to put a stop to it. I feel better when there's less kittens out there, because they can get blind and deaf and just run right out in the road. There was one between John Deere and that community with all those cats from that one cat, and they got caught in a baler and all kinds of things out there by John Deere, and there's just all kinds of problems that can be caused with kittens. So hope to have less of that in the future with less kittens being born outside. Is there any questions anybody might have?
Any discussion up here?
Your Honor, well, I'd just like to say thanks for the presentation. I think people learned a lot of things. I know I did. This is a topic of concern, no matter what area of town you're in. There are feral cats everywhere. I do think that the citizens of this community want something done. There's nothing we can do short-term, but there are actions we can take today that will affect the population in the future. And I think this would be a wise investment. It's not very much money. And so I won't make the motion yet. I want to hear some other people talk, but I would be in favor of this proposal.
Your Honor, I mean, I've been following you guys on Facebook for quite a while, and you guys are really busy, aren't you?
I got seven traps set right now, and we got seven cats off the road this morning, so I hope to get at least 14 today in total, so.
I mean, you're incredible catching the cats.
orchestrate with however many vets we have to, as long as funds are there.
And Stephen works full-time. A lot of the volunteers.
Not quite full-time, but 35.
Could you guys get a little closer to the microphone? Because there are a lot of people that watch online. That's all right.
Yeah, sorry. I mean, Stephen has pretty much a full-time job. I have a full-time job. And so Stephen is by far the hardest-working volunteer and leader we have. So you're right, there's a lot going on on that page.
I guess I agree with Jeff. If we can get the backlog taken care of, and yes, you do need, the Animal Rescue League is full. I can definitely see having the structure also. I think it's a good idea. I think it's what we need.
Your Honor.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? The goal for an additional 75 to 150 spays and neuters, is that limited by your capacity? Is that limited by financial?
I'd say by two things, mainly financial, but also like, I mean, we'll go to as many vets as we have to. We're going to Cedar Rapids tomorrow, which is about an hour away, so they're going to have to leave around 5:00 in the morning to get there. And anyway, whatever, that's to get another 10 cats a month. So we'll do whatever, we'll work with as many as we can to achieve those numbers.
And a lot of them on that waiting list are, when I say semi-feral, you know, cats, feral cats, they're very friendly to the person who feeds them every day. And it's very deceiving, because I, when I first got involved, I'm like, well, there, just grab them, put them in a kennel, you know, you can get them. They are, like I said, even the person who feeds them every day will struggle. If they're pure feral cats, it's a struggle to get them. And I know there's people in the audience that can attest to this. But we do have a lot of cats on that list where they are catchable, and so we can fill some of those slots and get them fixed fairly quickly, I would think.
Yep. Just, we try our best to get the numbers, but like usually the vet likes them there by a certain time to incorporate into the surgery schedule, and a spay takes two hours versus a neuter takes 45 minutes, so. Yeah, anyway, so if I get three males, or three females, it takes six hours out of their eight-hour day. And anyway, it just kind of goes by what we can do with however many vets. And I've been thankful that many vets have been able to get us in on short notice when we get more than what we were kind of planning on, because I get emergency calls, people catching them when they're trying to catch raccoons, you know, other reasons that, you know, they're not even after the cats, and then, you know, they have to do something with it. We don't want them, releasing them at the nearest trailer park and then not getting fixed, because then it's really hard to trap them after they've been trapped already.
Yeah, that's one thing to note. Once a cat has been trapped, it is very hard to trap that cat again. So we try to, once and done, and get it taken care of.
Unfortunately, we have a lot of people that dump them. There was just somebody threatening me last week to dump them by River View. And there is, I've got multiple people that live in that neighborhood that say they see it happen very regularly, so it doesn't help.
Thank you.
Your Honor. I just had a question on the recovery time for a male and female. What is that around?
After surgery, like I bring them back the next day. We used to, when we first started the TNR program, we released them the same day, and we realized they needed more time to get their bearings and stuff, so we bring them back to the same community as long as it's safe for them, and the next day.
And is there, have you thought about putting collars on them after they get released?
Oh, we ear-tip them, just so when people send me a picture, I can say, we already got that one. Because I could easily chase the same cat again unless somebody gets.
How do you?
There's a little tip on the ear, so there'll be one that's cut down a little bit, so it just lets you.
They cut the tip off.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I don't like it either, but you know, they probably won't wear a collar forever, you know. It'll eventually be good for them. We do catch them, though, it actually becomes attached to the skin after years, so.
Collars are dangerous because they can get caught on things and get stuck. They do create, there's a collar that will break apart if they do get caught on something, and so a lot of them would probably lose the collars pretty quickly anyway.
Okay.
And all the ones that go into foster care, we microchip, just so we know if they ever do get reobtained, that it is another one we've gotten, so.
Sounds good. And then with, does the support group target, you know, more males or more females, or just whoever you, whatever you can get?
Yeah, yeah. We just try not to get the females when they're weaning their kittens, and take them too early or anything like that, or if they're pregnant.
If we do get someone who, I had someone reach out to me, and they had seven ferals, and I said, well, and she was able to tell which ones were which, and I said, you know, pick one, whatever you have most of, let's focus on getting those taken care of. And Stephen's list was so long, I actually paid out of pocket to have four of her females spayed for her, so we got those mamas off the streets, so they are not having kittens anymore.
I appreciate that.
And I heard you mention, you know, a challenge on the kittens after they get adopted, that they might not get spayed or neutered, so.
Yeah, so the Animal Rescue League, they can actually have the person sign a contract that says they will get that animal spayed or neutered. The kittens, once they reach four pounds, can be spayed or neutered before they even get adopted out. So that's why we want our kittens through our program that are taken in, through our program, going through the ARL, so that we can guarantee that they're getting spayed or neutered before they even get into a home. We aren't able to do that.
Okay. Sounds good. I was just wondering if there was an opportunity to provide something to the new homeowner, the new, not the new homeowner, I'm really sorry, the new pet owner. What, like something for them to come back and like, you know, when your adopted kitten gets old enough, you can come back to this vet and get it done, or something like that? Would that be something that would help you as well?
With appropriate.
You mean like if they can't afford it themselves to pay the full price?
Yeah, or just something with adopting a kitten. Yeah, because.
You could probably get them on the list.
Yeah, we can, we can work with them if they really, you know, are on a fixed income or something, you know. But we don't want to take away from our surgeries that are, you know, anyway, but that we've been going through them, so.
And plus, once they're adopted, they're containable. When we talk about the 187 cats that are currently on a waiting list, they're still outside, so they're still having kittens, because we haven't been able to get them in somewhere and get them spayed or neutered. The ones that have been adopted are at least in homes, and hopefully those homeowners are not letting their cats procreate all the time and make more kittens as well.
And then, so the ask is, 15,000 for three years? And in three years, what is your vision? Kind of like, what are you, what are you thinking would happen? What is on that?
I actually included a little handout that I created, because you'll see a lot online about how, oh my God, you're going to have 195,000 kittens in two years. They're very exaggerated, so I actually made that one myself, based on, you know, kittens or cats, females, having two litters a year, which is low, having litters of kittens from about four kittens, which usually we see, we see higher numbers. It's hard to tell, because we don't have an exact number of the feral cats that are out there today. It's all estimated. We don't know how many are male versus female. You know, it's just, we don't know. Honestly, is the answer. I mean, obviously, it'd be nice to get those on the waiting list, taken care of, and that way, when somebody says, hey, I have a cat, I think I can catch it today, we can get you in tomorrow, and we can get them done, instead of saying, well, sorry, we don't have the funds to help you right now, we don't have a slot, so, sorry, you know, you're just going to have to leave that cat alone having kittens. So we honestly, I don't know that we could project very accurately how many. We just, we try to get the ones done that we can.
I used to take them 10 at a time out of the trailer parks, but I was working with multiple 501(c)(3)'s, and I was just the trapper guy. I didn't orchestrate any of the funds or anything, but the more the merrier, just watching populations of between a 50 and 100 in a trailer park go down to zero is what we want to see. So I believe that we could do that at one place, like I said, at Godfrey's, where there's 43. We did that in less than three years, so, you know, I believe those, you know, you're talking about many populations, so, I don't know what it will take over the long course. But, you know, definitely, I can already drive down the streets and see that, you know, there's not litters. Every block I go, I feel, you know, compared to now, so.
Well, thank you so much for your work and being volunteers. I really enjoyed your presentation. I fully support you getting these funds to, you know, help out the feral cats and get them, if they can get into, kittens can get into homes, and the more, the better. And if they can get released, they can have a happy life, just knowing that they can't have babies anymore, the males and females, so then that way, they can still live their life.
If anyone's looking for a kitten, I have eight that'll be ready in about four weeks.
Sounds good.
Your Honor, I'm going to change the tone here for a second. Two things. You say feral cats are an integral part of any community's ecosystem. I'm a research guy, so I will give you my card after the meeting tonight. Please send me the research that supports that, okay? Because I'm sure there's a lot of bird lovers that will not tell you it's an integral part of the community. But the bigger issue I have is, I'm struggling with your numbers, okay? And kind of tagging on what Counselor Fonseca was asking, and what you said. So I did a bunch of research today. Ownership of pet cats really skyrocketed in the 60s in the U.S., okay? So that would say that's when the feral cat issue probably started. I don't have any research to say that, but that's probably when cats were getting put out, okay? So based on your numbers, 650 to 750 cats in Marsh Town is not an issue. Because it's been going on 60 years, and the research told me that a feral cat has a life of about five or six years is all it has, living in, you know, if not being fed, okay? So, you know, fending on its, or, you know, fending on its own. So help me understand your numbers, because if you can produce 250 cats in three years, okay? And again, getting to you don't know how many are male, how many are female, it's got to be close to 50/50, okay? So based on your numbers, what you're doing is never going to solve the problem. So help me understand the numbers.
You're probably right, but if we don't do anything, what happens to those numbers? Because, you know, people are feeding and taking care of these cats, so that lifespan is probably longer than six years. I mean, if people are feeding and watering, and even though the trailer court said, you know, we're going to evict you if you don't, we still have people who are doing that. People care about the cats, they're keeping, feeding them longer. So I think that the lifespan is longer than that. As far as, you know, when it started, I have no idea. And those numbers, 650 to 750, are based on the ones we see, the ones that we hear complaints about, the ones that Stephen knows where they are. He's got a map of where the, a lot of the colonies are, that I was not going to share that tonight, because we have people who threaten all the time to go out and take matters into their own hands and get rid of these cats. So I'm not about to share where we think those colonies are. But that's a low number. I know that I had seen somebody else who had put together a proposal, and they were estimating those numbers more around 1,500 to 2,000 cats in Marshall Town. However, I didn't want to use those numbers, because I only knew what Stephen knew, and so I, we're on the, I think we're very much on the low side for that.
And Stephen, obviously, your traps are catching other animals besides cats.
Oh, yeah, I get around.
So are you spaying and neutering raccoons?
No, no.
Okay, why not?
Oh, because they're, you know, cats are domesticatable, you know, and I believe, you know, if I could catch them all right now, and I had a big enough facility, you know, they'd be safe, they wouldn't be reproducing, and, you know, we could probably work maybe more, a lot more. I mean, I've had one that came from Shelby, Iowa, off a loading truck into Menards, and I spent seven nights trying to catch with seven different traps until I got it. It was causing $50 worth of damage between a cat litter, beef jerky every night. They had the biggest house in town, but we got it, and the ARL housed it for multiple months, and, but it was a feral cat. They couldn't work with it. And I ended up coming out there and feeding it, and carrying it around every day, and working with it, until it did get a home, and nobody in Shelby, Iowa claimed it. But just over there by the Grant Apartments, there's over 25 there just a few years ago, and there was two, three litters, one on each side of the street, people calling me every day. And there was also a 13-year-old cat over there that I was getting calls on every day. People walk in, their dogs are getting charged by this cat, and they were saying, this thing's rabid, you need to put it down. And I said, well, you know, I'll get it. And I got it, tested it for everything under the sun, it didn't have anything, but we fixed it, it had high testosterone for not being fixed. It thought everything between here and River View Park was his. And so he was just charging everybody, and now he's just a cat that you could pet. So anyway, just shows that after you take the testosterone out, anyway, I can see a difference. Just, I mean, now there's no cats over there need fixed, maybe one or two, and they stay pretty stationary, and I think I can get them. So that's how that little part of town, just right there, looks, and so I can kind of spread that out. And over where I live, there's not any really that need fixed, also by Fremont.
Well, I'm not going to ask any more questions, because there's a cat lover in the audience that is staring daggers at me for even asking these questions. So I'm going to shut up.
Like I said, they either love them or hate them.
I've set up four or five nonprofits. That's expensive, you know, the filing fee even to get an 801(c)(3) designation, and then to think about the work you've been doing for so near. I don't think everybody up here gets as many reports as the mayor does from the police department about how many calls they are getting, mostly relating to the mobile home courts.[1762.66]
Oh yeah.
Uh, but it, it, there's no question that's a problem, and there's no question you guys have been working on it for a long time.
Yeah, and what the individual courts, uh, court, trailer courts are doing, though, is finding the people, you know, for just housing them, feeding them, which raccoons are under their trailers anyway. They, uh, the kittens get caught up in the cords and can lose their limbs, and, and can die under there, and the insulation and whatever, and uh, but you know, when they tell them they can't feed them, then they just go everywhere else. Now they're at Culvers, Menards, they're getting hit. Oh, I've probably put, pulled over half dozen, just, more than probably normal, just off Iowa have, and um, so anyway, but, and then I get a lot more calls from across the street. A lot of people that don't want them at all, and say they're, you know, pooping in my garden, peeing on my car tire, and get in my garage, and all I can do is advise them to close their garage, and spray some lemon-scented stuff, so, but we can fix them, that's all we can do.
You can't put tin foil on everything around here.
Didn't work for mine.
Your Honor, I really appreciate the passion and knowledge of these two presenting. Uh, I'd like to make the motion to Direct City staff to bring back a resolution along the lines of what they proposed, and then we'll vote on it in the next meeting.
One recommendation that I might make is that um, the city cannot provide a donation uh, to a nonprofit, but we can provide a fee for service, and so I would suggest that we develop some sort of agreement that says that they'll provide certain services in exchange for the funds, um, and we can bring back a resolution with an agreement.
I'd like to make that my motion.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Raise your hand if you want to discuss it up here or out there. Okay, discussion. By the way, when you're coming up, Jim, uh, some, some of the people that are gonna be on my committee, the task force, rather, are in the room, and you might be one of them.
Okay, thank you. I was, if I wasn't, there, it wouldn't have been good. So anyway, um, Jim Shaw, five twenty-two North Second Street. Um, I didn't know we had six hundred feral cats, that's a lot of cats. Um, continuously, when you're driving around town, you see them, and uh, I got a cat from the Animal Rescue League, probably a year and a half or two ago. He's a huge cat, and he likes to sit uh, in my open doorway with the screen. And two nights ago, he let out a screech, like, I, I thought he'd got hurt or something. And so I jumped up out of my chair, and here's a black cat looking in, so they're meeting. And I chased it away, 'cause I know what my cats have got, and I don't know what that cat has got, so I don't want it near my cat, but, you know, I can see that this is a problem, so I'm, I'm all in favor of these guys getting the money to do what they, you know, it kind of concerns me that we're gonna put six hundred cats back out on the street, but I don't know where else you could keep them, 'cause certainly not at the Animal Rescue League, so, that's my two cents worth.
Thank you.
Doris Kinnick, twenty twenty Catalina Place, and I've been one of the recipients of Steve's help um, in uh, in getting a feral female off of, off of the street, and um, Steve has one of the traps at my house, so he's trying to get another feral female, or whomever decides to go into that trap tonight. So obviously, I am so in favor of this group and everything that they do. Carla, thank you so much, great presentation. Steve, you're a godsend. Austin, thank you so much for showing up tonight. I know, I was gonna think you was gonna be incognito. Uh-uh, no, no. So um, thank you so much for your time tonight.
Erin Carpenter, eight oh two North Fourth Street. I wasn't gonna speak on this, but your presentation was so wonderful, and I just want to say I'm so appreciative of the work that you're doing. Um, I grew up on a farm, and we had, oh, ten, fifteen cats, but we had thirty kittens every year. We only had ten or fifteen cats. They all died. That's so much pain and suffering for no reason, and so thank you so much for everything that you're doing to take care of these kittens, get them into homes. Um, and then also, uh, I lived for a long time in Ames. Ames does not have the same feral cat problem, because they started a T N R program in the early two thousands. Every now and then, there's one, or two, random cats that are walking around, um, but it is not an issue like here. Now, the thing that Ames has that Marshalltown doesn't is ground squirrels, so, because of the cats. Um, so again, thank you so much for everything you're doing, it's very much appreciated.
Austin Gillis, nineteen twenty-one Taylor Avenue. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Animal Rescue League. Um, I can tell you right now that I've run some numbers myself, and um, the Animal Rescue League cannot take on this task for what they're asking for um, cost of service. Uh, to answer um, Councilman Thompson's question, um, as far as like fixing raccoons if they get caught, one of the biggest problems that there is with that is there's population control on a lot of wild animals. There is not population control on feral cats. There is a raccoon trapping season, um, you can go on all different kinds of um, adventures, getting coyotes and things like that, um, but you cannot legally go after cats. That's one of the reasons why they are unfettered, uncontrolled, and that they can spread um, so much quicker. The other thing that I wanted to um, touch on is the fact that um, the Feral Support Group is trying to do it the right way. Uh, one of the biggest problems that we're running into is people calling out, especially out to the shelter, and um, saying things like, well, if you can't take it, then we'll just take care of it ourselves, and a lot of times, that's insinuating that they're going to do something nefarious to the cat. That cat did not ask to get born into this world, um, so it's not fair that they should have to worry about getting murdered, poisoned, or worse. The other big problem with that is if you're not doing it properly, you take an infected cat and you put it into a non-infected colony, you've created a super colony of breeding cats that will spread, or spread uh, diseases like no other. There also is a bigger economical, or excuse me, economical um, problem that it presents as well, as far as when a poisoned cat goes off into the woods and dies, it's eaten by something else. That animal can also die. We have laws and regulations in the state of Iowa regarding um, lead bullets not being allowed to be used. Um, it's for the simple things like that. You shoot a squirrel with a lead bullet, bird eats it, bird dies of lead poisoning. Cat goes out, drinks water from a fountain, has bleach in it, or rat poison, and then if one of our um, endangered raptors eats it, we've got a problem. Also, just real quick to, to wrap up, when I first moved out to my farm, overrun with snakes. I don't necessarily personally have a problem with snakes, but I don't want them crawling on me when I'm working on my lawnmower. We got rid of a lot of them. The next two years, I fought off rats the size of gophers. I was infested. I can guarantee you that if we start just taking these cats and offing them, or relocating them outside of town and not returning them back to where they do regularly prey, um, you're going to have an infestation. It may be cats, or excuse me, it may be rats, maybe mice, maybe ground squirrels, like it was mentioned earlier. Um, it could also be things like raccoons that are many times kept at bay from things like the scent of cats. So, we are at the A R L a hundred percent in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been fascinating. I'm being towed. I'm kidding. Uh, anyone else like to speak? Otherwise, let's call the roll.
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Your Honor, I'll have to abstain from this, I think, because of, my cousin did the presentation.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Karen, are we good? Staff has its direction. All right, one more discussion item.
Two more.
Oh, I missed one. Yeah, I did, didn't I? Okay, twenty East Main, request for proposal and redevelopment update.
Deb Millizer, Housing and Community Development Director, and this time I am up here to speak. And I do have to say, I have two kittens that came from um, Stephen, and they're a couple great, well, they're, they're a year and a half old now, so I don't know if they're really kittens anymore, but they were great additions to our family, and I feel so blessed to have them and love them. Um, so, twenty East Main, uh, did I close, I think I closed out of what I needed to look at. So, so in January, um, we put out an R F P for twenty East Main. I was gonna pull it up here, um, so we could take a look at it. Is this the little dot that I click on? No? Should I just forego it?
Open the, the edge, it's one, the edge.
Deb, do you have a presentation to give?
Well, I wanted to, I wanted to show the building, but that's, that's okay.
Oh, okay. I would just go ahead with your, what you have written.
Okay, I will go ahead.
What do we know the business building by?
Okay, uh, we all know it as Angels. Um, twenty East Main, a very prominent building, prominent location in downtown Marshalltown, right across from the courthouse. Um, the building's been vacant since, uh, well, the city, it hasn't been utilized for many years. The city um, got the building by RF, or excuse me, um, six fifty-seven A process in two thousand and twenty-two. Um, since it is a very prominent building, we put an R F P out for the building. Um, we did have one response, which was um, Phil and Elizabeth Curtis of In Stitches. Um, so they would like to um, utilize the property to expand their current business of In Stitches. Sorry, I'm a little distracted by the computer, I can't, I can't look at that. Um, so um, as I, as I mentioned, they responded to it. They have a, a business plan to expand um, their, their current offerings, which they do custom embroidery, laser engraving, and then I believe um, Elizabeth also wanted to add some additional classes, such as sewing classes and other things like that, um, in the building. Um, to support the R F P process and to get the building um, utilized, um, staff have been um, working with uh, the Brownfield Grant Funds. We had asbestos testing done on the building. Um, that was done um, previously. Also, um, I've been, been working to get us an asbestos removal, um, quote, quote from contractors, um, engineering quotes. Um, there is a structural, there's an engine, excuse me, there's a mezzanine, um, that we're not sure if that's, that uh, structure is safe or not, so we have engaged with um, some structural engineers to get a quote to see if that's stable or not, um, and then some other processes with that. Um, so if we were to, what I, what I'm here today to ask is I'm asking um, for city council to approve the R F P for the building to go to, um, excuse me, I'm feeling a little distracted, to be awarded to um, In Stitches for the, the price of ten thousand dollars, and then they would be responsible for the rehabilitation of the building. Um, do you have any questions?
Questions, comments up here?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Uh, Deb, uh, why is there no timeline with this awarding them the building?
Timeline as far as when the project would be completed?
The phases of the project. Why is there no timeline? Is, the last thing we want is now, if, if we're gonna move forward, I'm gonna speak for myself, the last thing I want moving forward is, I don't want uh, this vacant building to continue to be vacant for years and years, so.
So I didn't put the timeline in the, in the, in this. Um, what we did talk about, I believe it was like within two years, we'd have the main floor, um, they would have the main floor up and going. I think they want to move much quicker than that to get the main floor utilized, and then the second story would be, and I, if I remember correctly, was a five-year window. Um, the Phil, the Curtis family is here tonight, too, that they could speak to their timeline as well, and we could put a timeline in the, in the contract.
That's what I'd ask for, is when this comes back to us, that there be some specific goal setting, some smart goals. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Your Honor.
You bet. Anybody else up here?
Your Honor?
Yep.
I, I would reiterate what Councilor Thompson said. Um, from the, their first application to this, this was some of the concerns we had all along, and then also knowing the investment we're putting downtown that um, obviously want, want to find good tenants. Um, they believe this is viable for a business opportunity, but we also have an opportunity um, here to ensure that the best use happens in a timeline that is acceptable to the overall project.
Your Honor, if I may. Um, I, I like the proposal, as it's written. Um, a timeline would be nice, but not necessary. And mine, I think uh, the funding availability that the city has, and that uh, the package that you put together really helps with the decision, because uh, as Councilman Kel said, uh, some of the concerns that we had before uh, were taken care of, and that's good work.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, Deb, is there, so, from the city side, is just um, selling it for ten thousand, ten thousand dollars? That's, that's it, or what else is there from the city?
So from the city, um, we were, I'm sorry. Um, so we are working with, so we had the asbestos um, grant, or excuse me, the asbestos testing done, and then also, um, because there is, there is asbestos, um, we can apply for a D N R Brownfield Grant, which we can receive um, up to twenty-five thousand dollars, which would pay up to seventy-five percent of the removal of the asbestos, up to twenty-five thousand dollars. Also, um, uh, we are working on, um, excuse me, the, the building is also, since it isn't, and, excuse me, I don't know why I can't think now, I'm sorry. Because um, it is located in the central business district, it would be eligible for up to thirty thousand dollars for the city code upgrade grant, and then also up to twelve thousand five hundred dollars for the facade grant. This building also, it's not for city-wise, wide, but, excuse me, city-wise, however, this building also, or their project, would be a great project to apply for a Main Street Iowa Challenge Grant. Um, not, probably not this year, but maybe the year after that, which is a one-on-one match, and I think the city would probably um, support that, or I would, I think that the city would.
Okay, so like about forty to fifty thousand dollars in grants in city, kind of, right? That's kind of like the amount, kind of, yeah, that, after the fact?
Yes, after, after the fact, yes. Plus, plus the D N R grant, um, we would need to do that, we'd need to apply for that while the building was still in the city's hands to, to abate the asbestos.
Okay. Um, okay, and then, I guess when they, when they come up, and, and if they're gonna come up, I have a question.
Okay, do you guys want to come up?
Do you want to state my name?
Yeah, who are you?
Philip Curtis, twelve oh seven and a half, South Twelfth Ave. You got a question?
Yes, I was wondering, um, so with the remodeling, I, I was reading that it was gonna be five hundred thousand dollars in, in remodeling, right?
Yeah, that was a number we put out there, 'cause it, the reason, I'm a contractor also, so the number would probably be lower, 'cause it'd be at my cost, but if that number was bid out, it would be at the five hundred thousand. So that's why that number is at five hundred thousand, but realistically, it's more at my cost. I'd be doing the labor, and then just cost of materials. So, that's what we, for a value, we had to put a value out there.
Okay, and, and because it needs, um, it needs renovated, right? Like it has to be, like, or?
It does, and then it sat from the first time we went in there a year ago till now, this year, it's actually dilapidated even more, so that number would probably be more realistic. Like the mezzanine in there is actually falling, it wasn't before, and that's why we're going with some um, the structural engineers to see if we can save the mezzanine. We'd like to, 'cause it's like fifteen hundred square feet, so if we lose the mezzanine, I mean, that's a lot of footage for us. So that's why we're working with the, Debbie here to get some contractors in there. Not contractors, but um, structural engineers.
Okay, so um, when, you know, the vision is complete and um, ready to open and have the services you want to provide?
Yes.
Um, when are you thinking that would happen?
Um, the wife would like it to happen within six months, but realistically, probably a year, just because of timelines, depending on when it hits, within stitches, Christmas is our busy time, so we wouldn't be able to focus on the building, whereas after Christmas, we would be back full strength doing, working on the building.
Okay, awesome. And so then, um, I mean, you don't have to answer this if you don't want to, but like, what would happen with your, with the corner, with your corner building?
So that's actually Scott Carnahan's with Woodbury Building, so that'd be up to him to rent that out again.
Okay, so you guys would completely move out of?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
Any other questions? Anybody else up here? I, I'm reminded of one, we were trying to figure out what to do with a building connected to our city hall here, and had trouble finding anybody that would take it over, and there was one offer made that was connected to other buildings and rent, and it didn't make much sense, and then uh, Y, the Y S S came in and, and bought it, and bought some problems with it, you know, to fix it up, but uh, people liked it well enough, and it's really turned out to be a nice, a nice thing.
Yeah, it has, I have been in there, and that is a nice building.
And what's fun to see is the building next to you, that most of us know is the Gildner's Building, that's now back to being storefront, and you can see how beautiful it was, and making it look like our old Main Street designation is still, still. and making it look like our old Main Street designation is still, still alive, so.
I look at the big picture down there in your city center there, the, from, I don't know when that picture was beached, in nineteen forties, a big picture on the wall. And I'm like, all the buildings over there and then to what we've lost over the years.
Okay.
Your honor, I would make a motion that staff put this together and bring it back to us. And alls I would ask is specific, smart goals. Thank you.
Any objection to that?
I'd second that.
Call, call the roll then.
Ladihov?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca? Kell?
Yes.
Very good, that carried. I was in Stitches last week, and it's a great business you have running there, truly, yeah. All right, last item tonight is a tourism and promotional services contract. John?
Good evening. I'm Mayor and Council John Hall with Marshalltown Area Chamber of Commerce, thirty-four West Main Street. Back in front of you today with an updated proposal around our tourism contract related to hotel motel tax receipts. In front of you or in your, in your packet, you received what is, what is a fully updated agreement with the majority of the language being the same, but some additional clarifications and some additional items. So I'll walk through those very, very quickly and then happy to take any questions. So first order of, of change in the, the contract is actually the scope of work in the way that it's, it's ordered. So I think there's always kind of a misconception around this, this tourism type work, that local events and festivals are the, the primary or the bulk of the work happening. The reality is that the more you all see of the work that we do in, in tourism, the less impactful it likely is being, that that work needs to be taking place external to the community or working with those that are, that are external to the community. And so reordering these to make it abundantly clear around that, as well as we added item E, the strengthening relationships with state and regional tourism organizations, which is something that, that mirrors language that we've got in our economic development contract. And we can speak already to, to some value that we've been able to achieve from that. The Iowa Bicycle Coalition this last year did a statewide study on economic and health impacts related to trail systems throughout the state. And we were able to actually partner in and become a dedicated case study within that for a very low dollar amount compared to the overall dollars that that would cost. And that was a, a big benefit to be able to, to leverage, and that's through those, those relationships. Additionally, you know, as you are talking about the, the youth sports complexes and evaluating those, we have a, or we have a market analysis that the Iowa Travel and Industry Partners did with the Iowa Tourism Office, talking about tourism opportunities related to those youth sports complex that we'll be able to leverage and, and put forward as a part of that kind of comprehensive evaluation of our, of our facilities in the community, so that, you know, we can kind of evaluate if we're, if we're planning to update or renovate XYZ facility, and maybe we're one field short of being really competitive or able to compete for something, we'll be able to leverage that kind of data and resources. And so that's all part of that strengthening the relationships with state and regional tourism organizations. Additionally, on the next page, item number three, the reporting. We've added a great deal of robustness to the reporting. And, and I'll, I'll remind you all that three years ago, we didn't have access to any of this data. So this is all relatively new data, and I've got, even our contracts dating back to nineteen ninety-nine, where there was really no expectation of, of any kind of reporting. And, and so what we're trying to be cognizant of is, is your all, your all's responsibility to ensuring that resources being spent that are public resources are being used on behalf of the greater good, as well as trying to provide as much transparency into the overall tourism industry as we can. And so within those quarterly reports, you'll see, a, a number of it is, is a lot of metrics pieces that we, we get now on a weekly or, or monthly basis. You'll also see that we've included specific event reports. So our intention is to work with any event, festival, activity to be able to do reports. Within your packet, you also saw kind of the metrics that we're going to try and track from within those events, as well as what the placer reports look like related to visitor traffic. So we included a sample placer dot AI report. So you can start to see some of the data sets that we're going to be able to pull forward, able to leverage, able to talk about. We have different roles and responsibilities in each of these events and activities. We're not trying to pretend at all like we are the, the ones leading on all of these things. In, in a lot of cases, we are playing a support role. But also being able to bring that data together is, is helpful for a, a community as you think about future investments into different facilities or, or amenities throughout the community. Or as we think about road projects and those sorts of things, we'll be able to track our data or use our data to better understand what impacts those could have and how we need to be thoughtful about, you know, if it's road construction, directional signage, and those, those sorts of things that we'll be able to be very clear about. We're also going to be providing expense reports related to, to this scope of work. So you'll get, as part of that quarterly report, breakdown of where those, the, those expenses occur at. They will not time perfectly with the way that hotel motel taxes is received. We'll, we'll estimate based on a yearly basis, and, and, and obviously, our lodging stays fluctuate throughout the year with the summer being the busiest time. But our commitment to, to keeping those in front of you and then certainly hearing feedback to make sure that we are including whatever is most useful and helpful to you. A commitment to two presentations annually to city council. We'll always make sure we pick the longest council meeting to start our presentation with and, and drone on. But no, we'll, we'll, we'll be cognizant about if it's helpful or if it's not helpful. Certainly, we don't want to belabor the point or drag on on your time. But we do think that there's a lot of incredible things happening throughout our community that are worth at least bringing forward and lauding publicly if we, if we can. And then annual submission, so a formal marketing plan that we'll, we'll provide to you all by September first, so you can see where those resources are being expended external to the community. An annual report on corporate travel contract, contacts and outreach. I think that's something that's often undervalued related to tourism traffic is just how much weekday traffic comes from, from our corporate partners. And then a summary of hotel year round tables held. We're going to hold them quarterly. I don't know if we'll have anybody show up. Truthfully, our hotel years have been frustrating to work with as of late, and so, but we're committed to hosting them and, and trying to gather feedback and, and work with them. It all just depends on the local manager. We've gone through a lot of transition on, on some of those things, but we're going to continue to, to work towards that and, and provide you those summaries as part of it. The other, well, three other changes. So the, the next one is number four, the duration. The duration is three years in this, and, and we're pretty bullish on this for the simple fact that the work that we do on trying to recruit these events and activities is often multi-year or many years out. So we've already committed to an event that's coming next fall, so fall twenty twenty-six, and we committed to that eight months ago. So our timeline on being able to present opportunities, now it's a fairly low bar one. It's also one that falls within our industry. It's the Iowa Association of Chamber of Commerce's. So I feel a little more confident about being able to support it if we don't have a hotel motel tax contract. But we're sitting pending right now on a five-year agreement with the statewide esports, which happens three times a year. So that's, that's, you know, fifteen different times that they would host here in Marshalltown that we, we cannot sign on right now because we don't have the confidence of being able to make the kinds of commitments that they need for help in sponsorships, for potential help in equipment and facilities. And that's, the, the three-year contracts gives us at least a much longer timeframe, a time horizon to look at and more confidence that we've, we've got this. And our hope is that we're not showing up at the eleventh hour to talk about the renewal in this contract, but it can be a more ongoing conversation, again, knowing that we're going to be twice annually in front of you all and quarterly reports. We also added a growth and organizational development item. That's number eight. This actually was, was predicated on a piece that was in the previous contract, but, but we've called it out separately. And it really is looking at ensuring that we're collectively having a conversation about what opportunities lie in front of us and knowing that there may be periods of time where we see a tremendous surge in hotel motel tax. And that doesn't mean that we should go out and hire a bunch of team members or, or bulk up in staff. You know, if we, if we know there's a major construction project that's going to come, that may fill our hotels for, for a couple of years. I mean, when they built the Marshalltown Generating Station, our hotels were completely filled for two years. With that, we have to be mindful about the events and activities that are happening on a recurring basis and ensuring that we can continue to, to support those through it, as well as, as managing through that. But we want to be cognizant about if we're going to see that surge in funds. Let's think about, are there opportunities that we should be pursuing with those funds that will give us then a greater pathway for more attraction on the backend? And so it's really just solidifying that in this agreement, that we're committed to consistently and constantly talking about kind of what we're seeing with these, these funds and this opportunity and what our market needs. And then finally, we added a force majeure clause. It felt kind of silly that we didn't have one. Fortunately, you all were comfortable in giving us some grace during COVID, because I can guarantee the tourism efforts weren't the same during COVID. But just added that in there, recognizing that things happen, and we want to make sure that we are, you know, comfortable if there is another major pandemic or, or the like, that, that we're not missing on an expectation the way a contract lays out. So with that, I will pause and, and be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions, comments?
Your honor?
Yep.
So, John, I very much appreciate the extra metrics. I think we need to do the economic development. I, however, know how we're squeezed on money other places, so I'd probably recommend we go to fifty percent. But all the layout I see here is a good, and I'd also support the three-year. You need to plan. You need to be able to make longer-term plans. So that'd be my recommendation.
Your honor, if I may? Hey, John, refresh my memory. The last two years were one-year contracts, correct?
No, last year was a one-year contract. Before that was two years. Before that was a series of one-years. And really, this, this incremental decrease in the, the percentage amount and the shorter contracts came about with City Administrator Kinzer. Prior to that, we were, we had significantly longer contracts.
And significant, it was in the sixty percent, wasn't it?
Uh, the, the percentage changed over time, but the, I mean, going back, again, I, I've got all the way back to nineteen ninety-nine. I'm sure the city has, has longer than that. But we had, for a period of time, six-year and five-year contracts at, and, and my records have us at the eighty-five-ish percent. I mean, it, it started as ninety percent. I mean, that, when, when it was voter-approved, it was, it was at ninety percent. And it's diminished from there. And, and it is, I think, an important thing to note is that, you know, this is a, this is a self-imposed lodging tax that, you know, the voters approved with the intention of those funds being utilized for working to attract and retain tourism activities for the community.
So if push came to shove, three years is more important than the six percent that Councilman Nichols just talked about? Or are they both, are they both, you help me understand?
I mean, the reality is whatever, whatever limitations we have are going to create limitations in what we can, can attract and retain, that in order for us to attract some of these, these groups and activities, we know we have to be willing and, and able to put forth sponsorship dollars or in other ways, commit to them for longer periods of time. And so the reality is that the shorter our contract, the fewer dollars we've got, the less we can do. And, and, and that's the case in, in any organization. I mean, that's, that's the reality here in the city, too. I mean, I, it's not lost on me. Again, recognizing that this is a, this is a self-imposed tax. This is a tax that the community voted to put forth to these efforts, that in, in a lot of ways, a lot of our business and industry are the ones paying it, because a lot of our corporate stays are, are tied to that. And so that's all to say that I can't sit here and say which one would be more harmful, but, but they have impacts.
But we can probably control the term, and you can control the, the amount of the percentage. The more you fill the hotels, that fifty percent piece of the pie is bigger. Because if the hotels are full all the time, then your fifty percent is a pretty big chunk of change.
Correct. It grows over time, but we've also been cut by significantly more than we've ever had the chance to, to build up or reclaim over that time, so.
Thanks, John. Thanks, your honor.
Your honor, every vote I cast up here is two eyes toward the future. I think the Chamber of Commerce and these efforts and other efforts they're doing are planting some really good seeds that we're going to harvest down the road. And so I don't think we need to shortchange to the chamber. I think we should propose with a three-year contract at fifty-six percent.
Other comments or questions up here?
Your honor, if I may?
You may.
Mine was on the city council when we passed the hotel motel tax. And we sold it to the community as a way to drive events coming into Marshalltown. New things, interesting things. And at that time, I remember, I remember it being eighty-five, but it maybe, and actually, I was on the convention and Visitors Bureau. I think it was nineteen ninety-eight. So as, as we've pulled back, that's just that much more that the chamber hasn't been able to do. If you look at what they've been able to do the last two, three years in Marshalltown and events, I'm not even going to go into name and all of them and everything like that. I agree with Jeff. I think we need to keep it at fifty-six percent for three years.
Anyone else?
And Councilman Ladihov, I, I don't know when the first hotel motel tax was passed, but the contract I show, which was the first time that the chamber became the operational arm for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, was from nineteen ninety-nine, and that was an eighty-five percent contract for six years.
Your honor, I have a contract from April eleventh in nineteen ninety-four at ninety percent.
Well, I got shown up. That happened fast.
She's damn good, I gotta tell you, John.
You know, I hunted through our server for these for a long, long time. I should not have. I should not have.
Exactly. That's all I do. Anybody else?
Your honor, I, I've talked in the past about my personal experiences with events here in Marshalltown. We have, we have some of the more notable ones that we've lost. I'm thinking state baseball. Growing up, going there and, and all the excitement around it, to even playing in the state tournament. So on the heels of, of losing state swimming, other large events, it doesn't seem like the appropriate time for us to be pulling back. So I would be in favor of the proposal as presented.
Anyone else want to weigh in?
The only thing, other thing I'll jump in with is certainly, we want you to hold us to account. I, I mean, you know, I recognize that there's probably a period of time from when this all started to now where we were not fulfilling the expectations and obligations committed to in these contracts with the city. And so it's our commitment that, that we want to be held accountable on this because we want to be able to perform at a high standard. And we're, we're going to constantly try and bring forward what industry best practices look like, what expectations are happening kind of globally in, in this front. And I can share that, you know, even nationally, or, excuse me, statewide, you know, we're seeing a major dip in, in tourism right now. Iowa year-to-date is down three and a half percent in stays for rural, two-point-six percent in revenue. Locally, year-to-date, we're up just, just under one percent or point, excuse me. We are up point zero zero six percent in stays and down point zero zero four percent in revenue. So holding steady when we're facing headwinds as a, as an industry, I think is strong and speaks highly to not only the, the corporate travel, but how we've been able to backfill some of those lost opportunities with new opportunities and continuing to work with folks like state esports. This last session they had just a couple of weeks ago, they actually moved the start time up an hour. We worked with them to move the start time up an hour. And because of that, most teams stayed the night. So all of a sudden, we got a whole tremendous new boom of hotel stays. So it's, it's, again, working through, and that was by soliciting feedback from our statewide partners about, hey, how do we, you know, what, what are your ideas on how we could get this to, to hit our hotels a little bit more? And that was one of the recommendations, so.
You build relationships over time with the people that you have. And, you know, I, I can look at several projects that we've had around town that I don't think probably would have materialized if we didn't have a strong chamber here. The mall is the most recent one. The mall is the most recent one, truly. That A I placer app that the chambers have been able to have, that's a fascinating way to see what the traffic count is and and help people that want to start a new business here, that sort of thing. So we also got a trail that's going to be connected at some point 34 miles north of here. We have another one that's going to be connected, two trails are going to be connected, east coast to west coast. That will draw people in here. We may be building more hotels someday unless we back down. Your Honor, if I may again. John, I know a year or two, whatever it was, a couple of us beat you up pretty good on metrics, and you guys have really stepped up, and that helps us.
Yeah.
You know, to look and really keep fighting, thank you, and plus, keep fine tuning that, so.
Yeah, and and, yeah, I I appreciate that, you know. I I recognize that there is often conflict in in these kinds of discussions, but my hope is that we've always taken that conflict and and tried to rise up to the expectations provided to us.
No matter what you think, we don't hate each other, we, you know.
Your Honor, may I?
You may.
John, um, could you explain kind of the event plan? I I had been talking with Dylan, and he explained it to me a little bit, but I just want to hear it from you on the tourism side of whenever there's, you know, popular groups or music or any type of concert, how do you guys kind of work with those event planners or to draw in like people from other states? And just because I do remember one in 2021, in the summer of 2021, when a very famous band came to Marshalltown, and there were so many people, and particularly, it was for the, you know, the Spanish being or people who enjoy Spanish music. And I just wanted to kind of hear what, is there anything that on the tourism side that would help with that or what you do or have done or can do, et cetera?
Yeah, and and so I think in a lot of cases, there's there's a couple of different folks that are kind of spearheading, leading, and and often the ones booking and planning those those events and activities. And so often, we're we're taking more that that supportive role. I think one thing that we're always being cognizant about is, again, now that we can start to track a lot more of those metrics, what's that economic impact of those events? So as we start to run into conflicts between, you know, property owners or between organizations that have control or ownership, we can talk a lot more robustly about that and serve as a mediator in some of those conversations. That's that's a part that we've been able to play. But I know that Dylan maintains routine contact with those folks, just being mindful of if there's anything that we can do or or support, as well as trying to ensure that, again, our hotels are trying to live up to the standards, that our restaurants are well aware of of big events and activities like those when they occur. I think that's a big part of it, too, is the local communication back to those that are going to be impacted is always important to just make sure they're not caught unaware. The last thing we want is a restaurant who's understaffed and unable to account for or accommodate those folks. So so that's that's a component of it. We're also working on and and working to support a lot more of the festivals, events and activities that are happening, not only here, but around the region, knowing that in a lot of the smaller communities, those are often homecoming type events, and ensuring that we've got kind of a best practices policy put together on that and and how do you, you know, making sure that you you're going through the checklist of, because, you know, you don't want to forget porta potties or 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 things like that, but then also measuring those to to track and see what our hotel impacts look like around those as well.
Red Blue coming up next, huh?
Yep.
I do think it was it was planned privately, I believe, and but it was just so, I think, just to explain kind of how impactful it was to see a very, they weren't just popular group, it was a famous group. And I think that if you're, you know, if you don't see or he or listen to their music or know how popular they are famous they actually are, they kind of don't understand how big it was to have that kind of tourism here, or have people from Minnesota or Nebraska or Illinois or different states come to our community in Marshalltown and stay at hotels, shop at restaurants. And I just want to explain that, that it was that that is what I would like to see, you know, in the future.
No, and and being able to celebrate those locally and make people aware, you know, and that's actually the example that we got from from placer that's in your your board packet is the April 19th event from from this year, and I I cannot pronounce, I'm not even going to going to try, but it's the right before Easter.
Sábado de Gloria.
Yes, yep, that Luisa put on a a major concert out of the fairgrounds, and you can see documented the the 4,000 visitors that that came out there for for that event, and that has real impact on our our community.
Yep, yep, I just want to, okay, sounds good. So if we're measuring that, that would be great as well.
Yeah, and 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 then measuring things like the racetracks and 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 being able to measure the racetrack over the entire course of of a of a season to figure out what that annual impact looks like. Are they trending up? Are they trending down? It's it's interesting. We've pulled some of that data, and you can you can tell when there's a rainy day. You can see that that dip in in the the way the data comes out. And so, again, diving into more of that data to be more mindful and thoughtful about about how we're we're measuring and and how we're responding.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to staff to bring this back as proposed. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I didn't ask for public comment yet. Any public comment? Let's call the roll.
Ladihov?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Good, that carried. That is all for tonight. We're adjourned at 8:12 PM, and will anybody give me a ride home if they towed my car away?